The school board work session begins in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in two minutes. The school board work session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three special administrative briefing and work session of the Marion County School Board to order at ten o'clock a.m. Please silence your electronic devices. And just before I ask the school board attorney to explain our rules for this work session, I did want to make everyone aware that the governor has asked that today, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, at ten seventeen a.m., that all residents of the state of Florida will pause for a moment of silence in honor and memory of the seventeen innocent lives lost during the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Incident on February fourteenth, twenty eighteen. So at ten seventeen a.m., we will be pausing, and I do have an alarm set, so don't be shocked if that does go off at ten seventeen, but in honor and memory of those individuals. So I'll now ask Attorney Jeremy Powers to explain the rules for this work session.
Thank you very much. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout the meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's administrative. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Chair members of the Board. Great to see you today. I have a very exciting announcement. I just received an email yesterday that we have been selected as the District of the Year from the Cambridge International Association. We have, we are recognized as one of three. We are the medium-sized district, which is appropriate. And the reason for this honor is because we have increased access of our Cambridge curriculum to our students and sustained or improved student performance on those exams. I'm delighted to get this information and be able to celebrate the work of our principals and our teams, our teachers, everyone, in raising the bar for our students. It's quite an honor for this. So more to come, but I'm just really pleased to share that with you. So I want to thank our team for all of their great work.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. What an amazing announcement. Having two children, myself, in the Cambridge program, that makes me even more excited. So thank you so much for that. With that, do we have additional items?
No, no additional items. I would like to mention, if I may introduce the next item. We're ready to move forward. Okay, thank you, Chair. So we have Ms. Morant back here today, who is going to present the school staffing plan ratios for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And I do want to mention, Board, that we have several of our outstanding principals in the audience. So it's a busy day in schools, and they're here, Board, to answer any questions directly from the field, if you have any. So I want to thank, I see Mr. Johnson and Mr. Carlisle and Ms. Sino, who are here. And so when you are done with any questions of them, we're going to let them go back to their buildings. I know they have a full agenda today. Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you. Ms. Morant?
Thank you, and good morning, Dr. Gullett. Good morning, Chair Campbell and members of the Board. I am back to share version three of the district's staffing plan ratios for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Our goal today is to get the Board's consensus on the staffing plan ratios, so we're able to make any necessary changes and have the final draft prepared for vote at tonight's Board meeting. The approval of the school staffing ratios tonight will help ensure we remain on schedule with the staffing timeline for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As we know, the ratios drive many other processes within the district. As I shared previously, Human Resources, along with the Chief Operations Officer, Chief Academic Officer, Chief Financial Officer, Director of School Choice, ESC Director, an Area Superintendent, and an Elementary, Middle School, and High School Principal all made up the committee to develop the proposed staffing ratios. The members of the committee are all here today, and as mentioned, including our three principals that were on the committee. And as Dr. Gullett mentioned, they are here to answer any questions you may have prior to returning to their schools for the day. The committee met prior to the winter break to review the current staffing plan. We also reviewed staffing plans from other districts and established a wish list. The committee was then tasked with going back to their respective areas to gather additional information and to prioritize their needs. The committee met a second time after the break and created version one of the draft. The estimated cost of the initial draft totaled approximately seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. At the direction of the Board, at the first work session, we revised the draft, which included updating the ratios for APs, Guidance Counselors, and Guidance Clerks to be the same across all levels, our Elementary, Middle School, and High School. The total for these adjustments, including the first draft, totaled a little over one point five million dollars. At the last work session, a request was made to share additional funding costs in each category, as well as the cost difference with applying the ratios across the Board, and then also with absorbing units that would be lost based on the proposed allocations. That information is summarized on the first page of version three of the staffing plan ratios. The total amount of additional costs, if we apply the ratios across the Board, is a little over four point six million. If we absorb units and allow schools to keep current positions that would otherwise be lost based on the proposed staffing plan, the total additional cost would be a little over five point three million. The third version of the staffing plan ratio also includes bands based on the ELL population for ESOL. Ms. Joanna Hughes has joined us in the event there are specific questions related to this area. As I've shared in previous sessions, schools are able to request additional positions in addition to the positions they were allocated based on their ratios, and have the requests reviewed by the unit control team. The positions that are currently allocated to schools, in addition to the units allocated through their ratios, are provided as a handout to you for review and FYI. An additional note to remember is that there are positions funded from other funding sources that are not included on the staffing plan, such as cafeteria monitors, graduation facilitators, and homeschool liaisons. We've also included two documents that illustrate the funding sources of each position. One document is based on budgeted positions, and the other is based on actual field positions as of February first. Please note that there are ninety-eight peer professionals under referendum. Ninety-seven of them are kindergarten peer professionals. And that was based on the budget. On the current schedule as of February first, there are one hundred and nine peer professionals under referendum, and ninety-one of them are kindergarten professionals. We realize that not one size fits all, and that schools may have individual needs that are not addressed by the ratios. We will continue to remind principals that they have the opportunity to request additional units based on school needs. As a reminder, there is a plan to proactively add a float position to the budget for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year to be able to readily address these needs. As you review the proposed allocations, I would like to make a small correction to Fort McCoy. They will not lose a counselor, as illustrated on the middle school side. However, with the proposed plan, they will still gain a counselor based on their elementary numbers. Lastly, before we begin diving into the proposed staffing plan ratios, I would like to note that the allocations are based on the one-hundred-day attendance count and not our twenty-three, twenty-four projections, which would include potential zoning, retentions, and school choice placements. allocations may change based on these official projections, which are inclusive of the other factors just shared. Finally, we will review the allocations again at the ten-day count and adjust as needed. If no questions, I would like to go ahead and begin. Okay, thank you. So some other dialogue that came from our previous meeting, previous work session, was about our behavior texts. So we have moved them to the ESC staffing plan and added that that is based on specific student needs. And I would like to pause. The changes for version three, you will see them in blue ink. So version one was red, version two purple, version three blue. But we'll see the staffing guidelines for ESC. We've moved the behavior texts here. And with an addition that we're proposing of ten, that would equate to the three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And I also, or we also updated the verbiage that's in that green block to actually illustrate what the practice that we have in place, so that a peer additional teacher may be considered based on student needs, and removing the percentages, since that's not what we were currently following. Any questions prior to moving to middle school?
That was ESC, right? That was ESC, right? Not elementary?
Yeah, that was ESC, and we're going to move to elementary, unless we have questions.
I just have one quick question. Would it be appropriate for the ESC substitute that we're considering adding, the permanent classroom substitute, for the ten-plus self-contained units, writing that additional classroom sub? Would it be appropriate to put that on the ESC staffing plan and just say that for every school that has over ten self-contained units, they would get an ESC classroom, permanent classroom substitute, instead of putting it on the elementary staffing plan?
We certainly could. We had some discussion regarding that. The principal would actually hire the substitute, and so we wanted to keep that clear, because if the ESC teachers are in place, that substitute wouldn't be needed, and so the school would actually utilize them in other classrooms. So that's why we kept it on the elementary side, but we can certainly move it over if needed.
Ms. Morant, I do have one question, and perhaps my question is about ESC specialists. So those are not, are they not school-based, and so that's why they're not on this? I'm seeing heads nodding, so no, ESC specials are not school-based, so that's why they're not on this list. Okay. All right, that answered that question?
I have a question. Chair, thanks. Yes, as far as the ESC specialist, at some point, we'll be seeing those numbers in staffing plan as well, right?
We can make that adjustment on the district level. I'm sorry, it's on the district level, so that will come in April.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving to elementary, one of the changes, well, the drastic changes is you will see the, based on the one-hundred-day count and the potential or the proposed allocations, you will see the dollars amount listed beside each item. So that is a big change. So if we want to make changes, we're able to do that with that amount there. We also added clarification that, we already had that they could sub for instructional support for the counselor, but realizing and making it clear that that's only for an allocation greater than one. So each school would have to have at least one counselor. But then if they are allocated additional units in this category, they can sub it out for instructional support, the same way they can with the other areas. So are there any questions here? Okay, so we will move to middle. Oh, I will say, and Dr. James alluded to it. We did add a second substitute, permanent substitute, for ten-plus self-contained units.
Ms. Morant, on the elementary, since it's on the screen right here, with the ESOL peer professionals, it does show that there actually would be a reduction. And the predominant conversation that I had yesterday with multiple elementary school principals is that they don't want to lose what they already have. And so I understand that we're potentially considering reductions in some of these areas as well, but if that's to the detriment of what schools already have, I don't know that that's a direction we want to go in. That's, that I want to go in, I should say. So that's just for clarification on that particular item.
May I? Can you explain what ELL population band is? So what does that mean?
So I will actually allow Ms. Hughes to share.
She can articulate that much better than you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, sorry, I was taking a drink.
That's fine. And looking at, before we even talk about the bands, first I want to be able to clarify the ruling for ESOL peer professionals and teachers that are ESOL endorsed. So in our consent decree, it states that English language learners shall have access to an individual proficient in their languages in addition to a trained ESOL subject area teacher. Schools with at least fifteen students speaking the same home language shall provide at least one aide, which in our case will be an ESOL paraprofessional, or a teacher who is proficient in the same language and who is trained to assist in basic subject area instruction, so ESOL endorsed. So with that being said, and also as Ms. Morant shared, looking at several districts, what this initially says is one to fifteen or more students in an L program are allotted one ESOL paraprofessional. So in our district, we have provided in excess several ESOL paraprofessionals to schools. It doesn't look that way throughout Florida. So with that being said, bands were created. So I believe you have a copy of the bands with you? They don't have that. Okay. So with the bands that was created, we looked at, in keeping with this one-to-seventeen ratio that was previously set, for elementary is fifteen to thirty-three English language learners that would constitute one ESOL paraprofessional. Thirty-four to fifty-one will constitute two ESOL professionals. Fifty-two to sixty-nine L students will constitute three. Seventy to eighty-six will constitute four ESOL paraprofessionals. Eighty-eight to one hundred and five will constitute five. One oh-six to one twenty-three will constitute six ESOL paras. One twenty-four to one forty-one will constitute seven. One forty-two to one fifty-nine will constitute eight. One sixty to one seventy-seven will constitute nine. And one seventy-eight to one ninety-five would constitute ten in elementary. The high school bands, are we there yet? Not yet, okay. So that is for our elementary ESOL paraprofessionals.
Question. So the max that we have currently in our district is ten, based on the band?
Currently, we have ten, according to the band. But our highest populated school currently is College Park at one sixty-two.
Okay. So we're within, we're in compliance with everything?
We are beyond compliance.
So I have a question about this also. I understand that we're potentially looking at ourselves in comparison to the state of Florida and other districts around the state. Are we aware of what the other districts around the state with lesser ratios, what their actual academic data looks like on those students as well? Because I know that's what's driving part of this conversation for this specific population.
Not looking at the academic portion, because of course, when we're talking about our English language learners, we are talking about language acquisition. And more so than looking at what is the outcome performance for students that's coming in with a limited English proficiency. What we're looking at is the ability for schools to make sure there's professional development, and there is a culture inside of schools that's very inclusive in collaboration. We do recognize that teachers are certified and ESOL endorsed, which is one of the requirements, a work requirement here in Marion County. So we look at their programs and their ability to help students be able to understand the language and communicate the language. And so in looking across and looking at that aspect of the English language learner, looking at just data when it is sent to us, we are making strides when it comes to access for Ls and language proficiency.
Okay. Dr. James?
If I understand our English language learner program correctly, there are a variety of tiered levels of students who are defined as ELL. So some have more work to acquire the English language, and some have less work to acquire. Is that correct? There's like a tiered approach to their label. So some students come and they have, speak no English and carry a heavier label or a heavier weight versus other students who've been in the program for many years and are potentially about to transition out.
They would not have labels, if you will. They all are considered English language learners. But within your access for Ls or any type of screener that's given to them, they're giving a, they're giving a score in each domain of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So with that being said, it's the way you instruct them based on how they scored, where there's not different levels within it. Of course, we do have our newcomers, and our newcomers are the ones that are here for the very first time. They may have had formal education and where they may have resided at. But they're coming into our system, and they're in the U.S. for the very first time.
My question is, an ELL population at a school, if there's thirty kids, presumably, they all have varying, varying English proficiency. So, and that English proficiency is tied to that score that you just referenced, right?
Yes.
So, and to what Ms. Campbell's point is, we have some schools that potentially have students who have a higher need than other students. So to set a basic band, which encompasses all students regardless of their need, may be taking supports that are currently in place for a school like Sunrise or College Park. I don't know if I'm articulating that the right way, but I think that to have an all-encompassing band would not necessarily represent the specific needs at that school, because they may have a whole population of students who have very limited English.
That, that's not the reality for our schools, but I do understand your point. But I also want to highlight or bring to the point that an ESOL para is not the one solution to being able to support that child. We also want our teachers and our CASs to make it a part of the culture in embedding ESOL strategies, having teachers participate in professional learning, and also utilizing our paras and collaborating with our paras to make sure that they're receiving the curriculum and instruction that's needed.
Okay.
Their support.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Thor.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Hughes. I have a question surrounding the screening process and the timeline. Are the ESOL specialists, are those district-level folks?
We have three ESOL resource facilitators, and they are instructional personnel that support our students throughout the district.
Okay. And my question is that the process and the timeline, and how kids are identified, and how quickly they, in my mind, they need to be identified as soon as possible, of course. And I'm sure that's our goal. But what is that actual timeline, and what does that look like? And is there enough support there to make that happen?
Okay, thank you for that question. So in looking at eligibility for the ESOL program, it starts with registration with our IPCs at each school site. They will receive a registration. If there is a yes on the home language survey indicating that there's another language spoken in the home, or some various questions, there's three questions that appears there. If there is one yes, then we are required to screen that student, according to the proper screener that is provided for our state of Florida. So kindergarten has one screener, and then one through twelve has a screener that we are required to give. Based on the results of the screener, then we will determine if the student is eligible for the program. So if they have a four or higher, and we determine that language is not a problem, they are not eligible for the ESOL program. But if it's lower than four, and we see that there's a need for a language acquisition, then that student is put into our ESOL program. From the moment of the yes on the home language survey, there is twenty instructional days to assess the student at that point. So they are required to be tested. Usually, they are tested by the ESOL paras or someone else in the school that's a designated administrator for any of our WEDA screeners.
Thank you for that. So this is relevant to the conversation in the sense that our ESOL paras are qualified to do those evaluations?
Our ESOL paraprofessionals are, at our district, the ones that administer the assessment to our students. They receive training through the WEDA website online with student pathways and assessment. They will provide access to that website, and they will participate in a training there, and then they're able to test. However, we do have schools that do not have ESOL paras, because they do not have fifteen or more. At those schools, there is someone in each of those schools that are designated as test administrators for those students.
I see. Okay, thank you. And, Dr. Gullett, this is something that you and I have spoken about previously, and it's part of our strategic plan. You know, we noticed the need. So now is definitely the time to share that need, so that we can allocate our resources accordingly. Thank you. I appreciate that information.
I have an additional question, just to make sure. I wrote down all the numbers as you were saying them in the banding. Is that a Marion County-specific ratio, or is that something that the state uses as far as the fifteen to thirty? I'm just, I'm looking at, basically, the first person takes the brunt of the. I'm just, I'm gl- I'm looking at basically the, the first person takes the brunt of the work. And then once you have a thirty-first student, then all of a sudden that load gets lessened significantly. And if you get up to fifty-one, then you're still gonna have five less than the first person. I'm just, I'm looking at a caseload scenario, so, um, is that our ratio that we've created or is that state?
The band is what we have created, the state says one to fifteen or more. So in some districts it's one to a hundred or more.
And, and I understand that, um, there, I, I still would be interested in knowing which of those districts have the academic data to ensure that they're, that there's, there's additional questions that I have about that. I, I understand we wanna compare ourselves to others, but then sometimes we do when it's convenient. The other things that I wanted to mention was about, uh, you mentioned that teachers are content area specialists. So I know in talking with elementary school principals yesterday, and this question may go to Ms. Morant more so than, than you, Ms. Hughes, but, right now, the way our elementary staffing plan reads is that in the instructional support, schools with populations of one to nine hundred ninety-nine receive one of either a content area specialist, a testing facilitator, a magnet facilitator, or a student service manager. And that either in all, i- is, is what's potentially bothering me. Because especially if we're asking a content area specialist to support our English language learner students, I wanna, like this, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm writing down as you're talking, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding. So maybe, maybe I'm mistaken there that there is content area, there are content area specialists whenever we have a higher ESOL population. Is that correct?
So a content area specialist, from my experience here in Marion County, they serve as academic resources, are coaches to teachers, so they hold collaboration in schools, which I have been a part of at different schools. And I'm saying that during planning, that content area specialist, when they are in collaboration sessions and they're planning lessons, that they are going to adhere to bringing up the conversation of ESOL strategies and how are you reaching students in your class? And what type of strategies are you using? Pictures, are you using graphic organizers? So that was what I was alluding to when I mentioned CAS.
Terrific, well, and I appreciate that, I love that that's what their role potentially could be. But based on these staffing ratios and the way I'm looking at them, it may be that a school hasn't chosen a content area specialist from the district, and so we may not have that additional support, i- if I'm reading this correctly. And I'm seeing a head nod from our elementary principal that's in the room as well. But I, I received that from multiple principals yesterday as I was talking to them. I, I know I made a statement early on, and this is for Ms. Morant and the, the team. The main thing I heard from principals yesterday is they don't wanna lose what they already have. And, and so some of what we're looking at on these staffing ratios is in fact going to remove some of the support that schools have right now and have been used to. Um, and I, I don't like the idea of a school having to choose whether they're gonna have a student services manager or a content area specialist. That's just a, a general topic, that's not necessarily for you. But because you did mention content area specialist, it gave me a wonderful window of opportunity there. Board, are there any additional questions about the, uh, ESOL in, at the elementary level?
Go ahead, Ms. James.
Uh, I was just gonna offer almost all of our elementary schools purchase their CAS from their Title I budget. So they don't have it from the district staffing plan, but they are, I think every single elementary school has a contentary specialist on their campus. There are a few schools, Eighth Street and Madison Street, who have an instructional coach, not a CAS, so it's not, it's not, um, under the instructional support column. But every other elementary school, being that they are Title I, has purchased one, at least CAS.
And I understand that, right now, all of our schools are Title I. But we also don't need to bank on that that's gonna be the way that we strategize every year. Because in fact, we may have a couple of those schools that are not Title I next year and don't have access to those dollars. Dr. N.H. Jones has just recently become Title I, because when my students, when my children were there, they weren't. So that's why fundraising was such a big deal back then, because they didn't have additional resources and dollars. And I don't know that they always will, so that, that's my only concern. If, if the school support is being based on Title I funding, that, that's, there, there's positive and negatives to that. Certainly, we appreciate that funding stream and that funding resource, but there's a reason why you get Title I dollars and so that.
But if N.H. Jones is, is a supplement from the, N.H. Jones's CAS is a supplement from the district. That is in addition to the basic unit allocation.
And the basic unit allocation right now gives them the opportunity to either have a student service manager or a contentary specialist?
Correct, so they have a dean and then they have, the district has supplemented a CAS from the district pool of money. And Madison Street and Eighth Street do not have enough Title I funds to purchase an instructional unit. So they can only purchase a para. So Dr. Curly has a, an instructional para that he's purchased with his Title I funds. And then the district during COVID time, I believe, supplemented those two schools with an instructional support person, but they're not instructional support, they're in a, like a classroom teacher instructional level unit.
Which is an S R funded unit that goes away in a year.
Which goes back to the conversation that Dr. Gullett has had, that we have upwards of three hundred positions that we'll have to figure out how to absorb into, um, in some capacity if we're going to retain them.
Chair, um, and, um, thank you, Ms. Hughes, you, you left real quickly. But I had one more question, um, for that, it's, it's brief, I promise it's real brief. I, I'm just asking for clarity. When you talked about the, uh, ESOL banding, you did say that, um, in coming up with that band, those bands that you did take consideration to decree, is that correct? Did I hear that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you, that was it.
Ms. Morant?
Any other questions for elementary or I know Ms. Sino is here representing elementary as well? So any questions for me or her prior to us moving forward?
Did, did the, um, in looking at the, this, the, these different areas, elementary, middle school, did, how, how, how did we get input from this, from the elementary principals, from the middle school principals, from the highs, how, how, how did the input come by?
Certainly, so we had a committee meeting, um, which included the three principals back in December, it was prior to our break. And then they came with a wish list and things that would be great that they wanted at the respective schools. And then with the list and the, the items that we discussed, they took it back to their respective, um, cohorts, so the other elementary principals, the other middle school, other high school principals. And then we met again with that feedback after the break.
Well, for clarity, just for clarity for, for everybody that's listening, is there were cohort meetings prior to them as the delegates coming to talk?
Yeah, so in between the two meetings, so we met the first meeting, then they went back to the other principals during break and coming up out of break, and then we met again in January and they brought back that feedback.
Thank you.
I, I've, I guess while we're still on elementary, the one question that I asked of a dozen or more principals yesterday in elementary was specific to the one-to-one kindergarten para professional. I, I called specifically the schools in my district, but also some that were potentially receiving six allocations or four new kindergarten para professionals or, or even three. Be- because I, I wanted to know, and this, this again is, let me start with this, I would've started with this from the very beginning. As I told every principal yesterday, philosophically, I disagree with school staffing ratios. And what I'm about to say is exactly why. Because each one of those principals had different unique needs. A couple of them said, absolutely, if I had an opportunity to have four more people on my campus, they absolutely would be in kindergarten. However, with a couple of them, it almost became that a kindergarten para would be a seasonal position. Hear me out, this is totally something new that we've never even considered. But in talking to several of them, the kindergartners have so little knowledge when they first come, they don't know how to stand in line, they don't know how to button their pants, they don't know how to open their milk, all the things they don't know for the first nine weeks and possibly even the first semester. But right now, they are rock star kindergartners and they are rocking it. That's a seasonal position. And, and so if we dictate that they have to have a kindergarten para professional, it might be that that instructional unit would be better served to them to be a flex as opposed to be just an outright kindergarten para. Even an ESOL para, an ESE para, like they're, they, they, when I asked specifically about if you had these three extra units, is that where you would put them? Because most of them, that's what they would be receiving is extra para kindergarten or paras. Most of them said, yes, but it, it would be much better if it was a flex position or we'll take all the hands we can get, you know, I got lots of, you know, it was like, we'll take, because, you know, some smaller schools, they'll take all the help they can get because they're having to pull everybody to do car line and everybody doing this, that and the other, so. Philosophically, I disagree with staffing ratios in general uh, because of that very thing, that schools and school leaders understand specifically what they need. I'm not really comfortable with the district dictating to them what we think they need. And that's where I feel on kindergarten paras. So I don't know if there's any feedback that there is about kindergarten paras additionally from what I received yesterday. But I'm, I right now am not comfortable with a one-to-one ratio on kindergarten paras. Unless there was a way we could create a seasonal position. And we don't have that and that's not possible. So that's where I land on that one, but I don't know what all of your thoughts are on that. Go ahead, Ms. Thor.
Thank you, um, you know, if COVID taught us anything, it's how to be fluid and, and flexible. And as the needs change, uh, we have to be nimble enough to address them, um, more or less in real time, because there's only a hundred and eighty days in the school year. And I do hear, uh, what Chair Campbell is, is saying, you know, thankfully, kids make a lot of progress from the first day they arrive at school and, until Christmas time. And then there's also the, the reality factor. The reality factor is that even if you are a designated kindergarten para, especially over the past few years, you've been doing a lot of things besides just serving in, in kindergarten. Not in addition to serving in kindergarten, I'd, I'd never wanna say just, because these people are rock stars. So, um, that's the importance of having conversations like this and coming back together to meet because new ideas come out to address our current situation. You know, uh, we do our best to get the crystal ball out and try to predict what we may need in the future. But as it stands right now, we don't need to be losing anybody from our school sites. You know, uh, we have had tons of people working way outside their job descriptions for the past few years and, and doing it admirably. Kindergarten paras, we, we know the focus, we know the, the need on early childhood education intervention. We all know it's a lot less expensive to get it right the first time than to try to teach a tenth grader how to read. So I, I love where this conversation is, is going. I really like the idea of having as many flex positions as we can accommodate. Because then people that are getting hired are being informed upfront. While you may be getting hired to be a kindergarten para these early weeks, it is entirely possible that you will be pulled to cover a class. It is entirely possible that you will be, uh, helping with bus duty because there's not, teachers are out that day and, and for safety, you know, we need you to be able to do that. So there, there's a lot to this and, and since Ms. Sino has come all this way and I, I would really love to, to hear from her before she leaves about, um, your current situation at your school and, and your feedback on the comments that you're hearing from the board so far. You know, we're committed to doing all we can from our positions to getting this right and supporting through our superintendent your efforts, because you're where the rubber meets the road.
Good morning, thank you. As far as kindergarten paras, so like Reverend Cumming said, how did we get input? After our first, yeah, meeting, I emailed all the principals and I said, listen, this is the current, you know, staffing ratio, I've been put on this committee, I need your feedback. The most feedback I got and the most wish list, as we began to call it, was about kindergarten paras being back to one-on-one. Because of the, what we try to do as principals and school leaders and teachers is when students are struggling, we try to keep them in the classroom as much as we can. And, um, when you're talking about kindergartners and possibly never being in school before, maybe because of the COVID pandemic, whatever it was, it's, it's been increasingly more frequent that we get calls for kindergartners needing support with that in the classroom. So that was the most request from principals that I received. Some were phone calls that I wrote down and some, they just gave me their input back in writing, but that's what I got.
Ms. Sino, may I ask, were the requests and the questions that you were asking of those principals, was that in the first nine weeks or in the, obviously in the first semester?
No, it was, um, when did we start? It was November? Late November, early December.
So it would've been in the height of whenever they were experiencing potentially all of the challenges that I just discussed that potentially were seasonal?
Maybe, I mean, that's close to the middle of the year, so, yeah, first semester.
Okay, um, did you have any feedback on guidance counselors? Uh, there's, there would be eighteen additional guidance counselors that we would be adding should we go with the plan that we currently have in front of us?
I, I received a little and part of the input was from me that our guidance counselors are overwhelmed. I, I now have over seven hundred students with one guidance counselor. So I heard a few people, um, request that we get an additional guidance counselor, especially to kind of align with middle and high school numbers and their units, so yes.
In conversation I had yesterday, some principals were saying though, potentially if that extra guidance counselor could be a flex position, because they actually needed a testing facilitator or something else as opposed to a, a guidance counselor to actually focus on the mental health needs of their students and then have someone else that served in another role. Do you think that would be something that would be beneficial or? I mean, we're, we're talking about flex right now, a little bit, because I, I, I don't like saying you absolutely have to have this specific person on your campus if in fact that's not the need of the school.
So you're asking if the second guidance counselor would also be flex? Um, that would be amazing, I think a lot of principals would appreciate that because the APs are, you know, inundated with testing and even though the guidance counselors help with the access testing for ESOL and things like that, ultimately, it's their responsibility. So that would be wonderful and always as much as support we could get in the mental health education.
Thank you. Dr. James?
Um, thank you for sharing your comments. I think that, that, I have a question for Ms. Boston Ellis regarding kindergarten para funding. So kindergarten paras are funded out of referendum?
Sino, don't go over there, please, because I, I got a question.
So kindergarten paras are funded out of referendum. I apologize for not being better versed in this. Is the referendum funding specifically for kindergarten paras or is it for instructional paras?
Not for paras at all.
How, how are we funding kindergarten paras out of referendum?
I don't have, good morning, I don't have the specific language right in front of me, but it does talk about para professionals. Doesn't say kindergarten para professional.
So, so, and, and we have, our job description is simply for instructional para professional, not for kindergarten instructional para professional. Is that accurate?
I can't speak to the job description, but if you look in the assignments, there's all kind of paras, kindergarten paras, Title I paras, ESOL paras, special needs paras, so there are a myriad of titles. But like I said, the referendum, that was a decision by the district at that time. The superintendent at that time decided that there needed to be more emphasis in kindergarten. And then at that particular time, we hired almost two hundred, I believe, kindergarten paras, because that was where she placed the emphasis. Not Dr. Gullett, but that was where that superintendent.
So, for instance, my daughter's kindergarten teacher was out on Friday. The kindergarten para, one of the two that supports her school, subbed in that teacher's classroom, but that para also spends time in that classroom. So that principal didn't have to find a substitute to cover the class. Um, they were able to slide that individual who's familiar with the students right in. But outside of that, when all of the staff is present, that para professional is able to pull a small group and able to run a learning center and all of those things. So I'm in one thousandth support for doing one-to-one kindergarten paras. I can appreciate Ms. Campbell's, um, reflection on adding flex. So the reason I was asking those semantical questions is because would the, is the job description a kindergarten para professional or is that just what we call it in Skyward or, or wherever? Because theoretically, if we added these additional kindergarten supports to our campuses, could they be added with a as an instructional para that the, the principal could choose to put in kindergarten or could choose to put elsewhere on their campus to support the instructional needs? Are we able to still fund that through referendum? Because it is an instructional para professional.
So are you asking my legal opinion on that?
Well, no, I'm asking. Well, no, I'm asking.
Throw the word legal in, throw me under the bus, right?
If, if it's, if they're all considered an instructional para professional, it is okay to fund them through referendum?
That was the decision of the superintendent at that time.
Is that still an appropriate decision?
I can't speak to that. What I can speak to is that the language of the referendum would allow for it.
Okay. My last question is, if we take $2 million of referendum money to add instructional para professionals to our school sites, from a budgetary perspective, where is, where is the other bucket that will come from? Is it school safety or special area teachers or where, because we're going to have to find, we're going to have to move the 2 million from one place to another, right?
Correct. And I would, we would have to do some reshuffling. You're exactly right in terms of where units are funded. But I would also reflect that for next year's and the next four years referendum, we are supposed to be amping up safety. So we're looking at increasing our expenditures that are related to safety. So yes, we do that all the time, making adjustments. But again, if we're using those dollars, they're only for four years. And that was the concern four years ago, what happens to all of those 300-plus units that are currently being funded out of referendum. Not that we would do anything in terms of laying people off. I don't want that put out in the atmosphere. But that is a real concern. And it would be based on board direction. If your direction is to put those units in referendum, we will follow that. But we are all fiscally responsible in terms of what happens in four years.
Madam Chair.
Can I just ask one last question? This $5 million number then at the top, Ms. Moran, includes the, includes the cost, the $1.3 million cost of para professionals being added from the general fund then or from the referendum fund?
So this is overall. So the 2 million for our kindergarten para professionals that's proposed, as of now, that would come out of referendum is what I'm hearing. But that overall number represents the total cost for all of the proposed positions that we have.
Okay. So in looking at that 5 million or 4 million number, whichever you want to look at, that includes the 2 million of kindergarten paras?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis, for always helping us to stay fiscally responsible in that decision because we do know that the referendum could go away in the next few years. And we have to be planning as if that's not going to happen and have a plan of action, a plan of action in place. Ms. Sino, thank you for being patient and waiting. And thank all of y'all for coming out this morning and giving your input on this. Madam Chair brought up the issue about flexibility with these para professional positions. Do, and I'm asking this maybe because I don't, I don't know, it sounds like I'm hearing something. I just want clarity. So do not, don't the principals have, currently have flexibility with how they utilize these para professionals? Whether they're kindergarten para professionals or they're any other type of para professionals, don't they have some flexibility in that?
We have flexibility. So I have three IND units at my, on my campus, and we have six ESE para professionals that are, for the most part, in those rooms. But I have flexibility that if a pre-K ESE para is out, then I can center into those rooms, an inclusion para, things like that. So we kind of keep them within their job description.
And with that flexibility and within their job descriptions, the paras are also under MESP, correct?
Yes, sir.
So you, we still have to work within the collective bargaining unit agreements in dealing with how, and how we deal with the paras and how much flexibility the principals do have, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. That is one reason why we recognize that paras were doing a lot of substituting and continue to do so and added that, I think it's $50 a day supplement. There is an incredible amount of flexibility there. However, it's all in how it's communicated. You know, if you're hired feeling like and being told that you're going to be a kindergarten para and then suddenly it's a good morning and now you're going somewhere else today, that's, that's fine because it's meeting the needs of the school as long as that is known upfront. You know, let's just put the cards on the table that this is where we are as a district because we have a shortage, you know, of employees pretty much across the board. So that does need to be part of this conversation because, you know, if I'm going to feel comfortable voting yes on things, I just want to make sure that the folks that are honestly doing the work are well-prepared and understand. And that also includes training, you know. And I know that Dr. Gullett is committed to that. As a para professional myself, that's how I got started. You know, I basically had to ask and advocate to learn. And so I'm glad to see that changing because what I'm hearing is, is that these are really essential folks. And the funding referendum, we're very safe there as far as it just says para professionals. It's not a designated class of para professionals. And point well taken because as far as the referendum is concerned, it is finite funding to meet what appears to be an infinite need. And we don't know what creative funding sources are going to come our way, you know, moving forward. But anything we can do to get these essential people under a consistent umbrella of funding that they can count on, you know, in this, if I was applying for a job, I'd really want to know that my job is going to be there two years from now, four years from now. We do a pretty good job of absorbing great people, you know, into our, into our school community, no matter what happens with funding sources. But, you know, again, that's all part of this communication. Thank you, Ms. Sino.
Thank you, Ms. Sino.
Any other questions for elementary?
The last thing I'll say is just a comment, and it's not a question per se. I do, I'm never going to say that our schools don't need additional support. But whenever I look at the ratios again, and I've already expressed philosophically how I disagree with this thought process, we do have one school that we're potentially adding eight people to this next year. And that's, that's fine if they actually need all of those eight new people on their campus. Some of these schools will be receiving four new people on their campus. And those are just big numbers when we're looking at overall, if we're talking just strict on ratios. And it's, if we're good with that, then I'm not sure where some of these folks are going to go as far as, I've talked to principals who will be receiving new individuals in administration, and they don't know where they're going to put that person because they don't have space. So they, so there's some additional questions, I guess, that I have. But if we're going this route, board, I just want to make sure that we're understanding what it really looks like on a school campus to be adding upwards of six to eight people to a campus that doesn't currently have those individuals on those campuses.
Respectfully, Madam Chair, even with the adding of that many people to a specific campus, is not the principal included in those decisions of getting that many people to come on if they needed that many? Can't the principal say, I don't need the eight, I need some, something else somewhere else?
And that's a great question because if we give them a ratio that says this is how many people you're going to have, do they have the ability to turn it down?
Of course.
I mean, I'm asking that question because I, based on what I understood staffing ratios was, is that the district is actually telling you, this is how many people you're getting. And so I guess they just reallocate their Title I dollars, since we mentioned Title I a moment ago. I guess they reallocate their Title I dollars because then now they all of a sudden get all these people that they haven't had to pay for out of their own Title I money.
And that's a great question, and we've not had that asked. But just in my short time here, I don't think any principal would turn down
Right.
any staff.
Right. And so that, that's my, my point, that we're going to all of a sudden dictate that you get eight new people on your campus. Congratulations. I'm not saying they don't need it. I mean, with a school with more than 1,000 elementary school kids, they probably need as much help as they can get. So I'm not going to say that at all. But eight people on a campus that they haven't had this year with the same number of students potentially next year, that's just a large number. And so that's where I'm going to philosophically disagree with staffing ratios.
But, but I'm lost. I'm, I guess I'm lost.
Okay.
We just did something with staffing plans last year or so about the principals being able to say, hey, I may not need this, but I need that. So they were able to
Correct.
be flexible. Am I correct?
Correct.
So are we saying that if the staffing plan says they have to get six counselors, they have to take all six?
No.
No. It was the flexibility that they still had.
That unit exchange process.
Correct. The exchange, okay.
But also, there are many principals who are purchasing instructional paras from their Title I budget who very well would be able to afford another full instructional unit, teacher, teacher, and teacher unit versus buying a para because they would be able to free up their Title I funding because we would be adding para professionals. And these para professionals are going to live in the kindergarten classrooms or in another instructional classroom. They're not going to need an office. Like, the only people who would need an office are the guidance counselors.
Point made.
Madam Chair, if I may, I didn't want to interrupt, but I wanted to allow Ms. Sino to go back to her building and thank her again for being here. And I know we have, still have a couple of other principals waiting here patiently, so I don't want to delay. But I do want to mention this. I've heard the board have conversation around funding. I heard referendum mentioned, and I just want to provide some caution to the board. I am, I am uncomfortable with having a discussion about the referendum without all of the inclusive components of the referendum. So while I heard that would come out of referendum, I would caution to say may come out of referendum. I do not want to get ahead of that for the next discussion because if we start making decisions now, it could have some adverse impact on other decisions that are made. There's a lot of, there are a lot of moving pieces to that referendum, including safety, but also art and music and literacy and CTE. And so I just want to provide some caution to may, doesn't mean it will. If the board makes a decision today and includes that 2 million, that may need to come out of general. It may need to come out of somewhere else. I just want to put that out there for decision-making purposes because there will be an impact somewhere. There always is, but it may or may not be out of referendum. And we may be making promises that we can't keep.
Thank you for making that point, Superintendent, because that's vital, may, because we keep talking about referendum as if it's this unlimited pot of money forever, and it's...
And we have an oversight committee in place for a purpose. And if I'm not mistaken, there have been things that the district at times have tried to allocate that that oversight committee has overruled? Am I mistaken in that?
That is my understanding from the past, and we'll need to have a new oversight committee for this new referendum that's just been passed. So there's a lot of work left to be done with the renewal.
I don't think they overruled it. They didn't overrule it. They just may have, no, they don't have the ability to overrule it.
And that's why I asked that question because I wanted to understand, is that 4 million number including the 2 million or not including the 2 million? Because that, whether we're funding it from general fund or referendum is the most important thing to clarify.
So I think to answer your question, I'm looking at the team, but this dollar amount was not, was not budgeted for general dollars and is not currently budgeted for the referendum. And the renewal has not yet been decided. What if any changes will be made? Because remember, this current referendum sunsets and we have the renewal, and we have to look at what that looks like. There had already been a process of attrition based on the sunset of this, the current referendum. So we're in a very interesting time of transition, and we need to be really mindful of the decisions that are made for the next four years. But not budgeted, not budgeted and not discussed yet for the new referendum dollars.
Correct. But this, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So this, without staff reductions on page one of the draft version three that says 5,338,50291, that number includes putting the 2 million plus dollars of para professionals into the general fund.
No.
So it's two parts to your question. So yes, that 2 million is included in the 5.3 million here, but we have not identified where this 5.3 million will come from.
Correct. But that 2 million is included in that number?
Yes.
Right. Because at this juncture, if my understanding is correctly, and then Vice Chair has something to ask. Ms. Boston Ellis, these are numbers based on what this would cost us. This does not at all tell us from where these dollars would come. This is, this is additional dollars that we would be allocating for these specific needs that we've requested potentially in this draft three staffing plan that are over and above what was in the previous.
That was the direction of the board. What would this cost? You didn't indicate what funding.
How we're going to fund it. Right.
Correct. You just wanted to know what would this cost? And that's what we worked together to develop.
And while you're standing there, Ms. Boston Ellis, thank you so much. I know that this was so much work and so many hours, labor-intensive hours. But these two documents right here are documents I have wanted for two years. I'm so, so grateful to be able to see at my fingertips the numbers of positions funded out of referendum, the numbers of positions funded out of ESER, the number, all of it in one concrete doc. Thank you so, so much. I'm so grateful to you.
Well, you're welcome. But it's not just me. I have Thomas Dyke here with me. That is my staffing plan guru, and he helps a lot with the detail and knows a lot about the units. But what I would also add to that, it has budgeted and it has current as of February 1. And so those numbers have changed today in some way or form. And as we do budget amendments, the numbers will continue to change. So it's just at a point in time. And I just, that's always kind of leery. We don't like to put out information like this. But as long as you understand that that's at a one, a point in time and not, you know, consistently. The budget is what you approved, and we bring amendments to you every month, and changes are occurring every month.
Vice Chair, there. Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis.
Yes, thank you. And Ms. Boston Ellis is always reminding us of recurring costs. You know, we are committed to supporting funding at the school level, along with our superintendent, committed to supporting professional development so that the folks that are in the trenches doing the work have what they need to get the job done. That comes at a tremendous cost, apparently, because what we're asking for to get it all, I believe, is 5.3 million more than what's been originally proposed. So again, I appreciate this conversation to help guide my decisions.
Thank you. And prior to moving to, well, I want to move to middle school, but would you all like to hear from Mr. Johnson first or go through middle school? Just trying to be mindful of their, of their time with us.
Madam Chair, can we go ahead and hear from Mr. Johnson?
Absolutely.
Prior to that.
Come on up, Mr. Johnson. Good to see you again.
Northside Pride, come on.
Thank you for hosting such an amazing middle school basketball tournament this weekend. It was terrific.
Congratulations to Osceola, too.
Thank you.
Good morning. So do you have questions for me or how's that going to work?
Tell us what your overall thoughts are on this from, here's what my question would be. When you were participating in a committee, you came to one document. And now what we have is something quite different.
Yes, ma'am.
So talk to us about where you started and where we are today and your impression on both of those things.
Okay. So like, like Ms. Sino shared earlier or whatever, we came, when we came to the, when we came to the table with the first committee, we really came with a wish list. So it was kind of like, what do you want? And so we talked to some of our colleagues and they were, you know, we like testing coordinators at middle school. We want bookkeepers at middle school. We want, you know, extra discipline support in middle school. So, you know, obviously, once, that's the good thing about having Ms. Boston Ellis there. She's the voice of reason. And so she would tell us, yeah, well, okay, if we give you that, then where are we going to take it from? So I think through the process and in going back and talking to our colleagues, Mr. Carlisle and I came to the realization that we were, we just don't want to lose anything. So that was sort of our final, our final recommendation was just like, if we could just keep what we have, then, you know, that would, that would suffice, especially, you know, because we do feel like, you know, we are stretched pretty thin, just like everyone else. And I think, anyway, I just, I just think that we came to the realization that we knew that, you know, we get the fact that, you know, it's a, it's a money game, and we could, if we add something, we have to take something away. So we really just came to the, came to the conclusion that we would rather keep what we have.
Mr. Johnson, I know there's certain areas that are high priority.
Yes, sir.
Or high profile. And in not wanting Or high profile. And, um, in not wanting to lose anything, but there has to be some areas that you just can't afford to not get some people in. For one, that I know for you all is discipline.
Yes, sir.
With deans and, and APDs.
Right.
How, how is this going to affect that?
Well, I mean, I think I, I shared with some of you, I don't, I don't know how we would operate with less disciplined staff right now. Um, you know, I'm, obviously, you guys know this, my first year at North Mary Middle School. Um, we are, we're dealing, we're working through some, some discipline issues and different things like that, just like every middle school. But I think it was, Mr. Frazier sent out some data, you know, a month or two ago, um, and it, it basically had every grade level in our district, um, and then the referral percentages for each one of those grade levels. And sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in our whole district is like, made up like 48% of the referrals in our district. So if you think about that, I mean, there's those three grade levels, and it's, you know, we all know, we've talked about the, the, you know, it's a unique age. I think that's been the biggest revelation to me, moving from elementary to middle school this year, is just how unique an age this is, and how that transition from elementary to middle school is, is, is a big deal. You know, things that they do now are not, you know, so to speak, a slap on the wrist. They're, they're a little bit more, they're a little bit serious. They, and I'll tell you, the one thing I think that, you know, if you talk to any middle school or high school, or really probably even elementary disciplined, disciplined person, is the investigations that surround bullying. Because, I mean, really, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's, it's, it's a constant thing. Anytime you talk to a parent about a discipline situation, it's like, but did you not know that my kid was being bullied? That's why they did that? And so then that opens up an investigation, which takes time, um, and it takes people away from being able to process referrals and do different things like that. Um, and I think that that's the thing, that it's just, there, there's just a lot that goes on down there, um, especially at the middle school level. So I just don't know how, I, I, I just wouldn't be in support, and especially being from elementary, and, and just being fresh from elementary, I just don't necessarily agree with the fact that the support, especially in the discipline, is the same at all. Um, I don't think it's, you know, so when we're talking about ratios, I, I get that completely, but I think it's need, not numbers, um, would be what I, you know, what I would advocate for.
And, and I, I appreciate that, um, because I do understand that, um, that sixth, seventh, eighth grade group of kids is, is totally different. Um, I, I, y'all are dealing with some, some stuff.
Right.
Y'all deal with those kids as, um, when I was growing up, the old folks say, those are the kids that's starting to smell themselves. And, uh, they smell themselves, so y'all dealing with some stuff. And we can't, I can't see us this plan. If this plan is going to pull that support away from the middle school, I can't support those. I have to support a plan that's going to make sure that you guys still have the support you need, because there are other kids that are not smelling themselves right now, that are trying to get educated, and we, and you're putting a lot of attention trying to keep the school stable. So we have, whatever plan that we're going with, and I, and I thank Ms. Moran and all of you guys for putting this together, for, for trying to, um, come up with the best plan. But I, I don't think there's a one plan that fits all, that's going to work. You can't, we can't, we can't snatch the rug from up under you and expect you to do great work.
Well, and that's, I think that that's the thing. I think that, you know, us, the little bit, the smaller middle schools don't want to necessarily, because again, I'm, I mean, I, I'm just being honest with you guys, and you guys see the data. We're pretty close to being in transformation ourself. So again, I don't want to have to end up making, uh, the decision, do I want to value student safety and discipline over academics? You know what I mean? And that's what I feel like sometimes, if we're, if we're going to have to choose between academic or instructional support and a dean, I mean, I think that, you know, for safety and for, for, you know, for the, for the betterment of the school and the culture and everything, I gotta, I gotta go with discipline right now. But does that not, does that not negatively impact my, my academics? Because I, maybe I don't have a CAS, or maybe I don't have a, someone else that helps support in that area, so.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and, and I agree, you know, 100%. Um, the last thing I would ever want to do as a school board member is pull resources that result in required processes, like bullying packets being avoided due to lack of support and resources. You know, um, we want to support discipline so that it becomes a culture of caring and, and compassion, and academic focus, and an environment that is conducive to learning. And it's going to take what it takes. And the data is clear. 48% of our discipline referrals here in this community comes from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So if we are not allocating our resources to those areas, based on the data, then we're shooting ourselves in our own foot. So thank you for that.
Ms. Moran and I have chatted, and I, I want to offer us a solution, because one of the steps towards getting to site-based budgeting was to come up with district-wide ratios, because eventually, when we get to site-based budgeting, there will be a set amount of money, and then we will have to supplement that from the district level to support a school. So in an effort to continue to try to do that, what I would offer is that we maintain the ratios that have been presented, and then in our additional allocations based on student needs, we add a, a system principal to Danellin, a system adding meaning maintaining. But if we were to go off the basic ratios that are presented, we would add those resources as additional allocations based on student needs to support the unique needs at those schools, with the, the understanding behind it that annually, or every, every other year, we are recertifying those needs, because needs do change and shift, um, so that we can acknowledge that the school population is producing this much money, which supports this much staff, but from the district level, we acknowledge that they need additional supports to be successful.
So from a funding perspective, Dr. James, you're proposing which of our options here?
I'm saying that we would move forward with the ratios presented for middle school specifically. And then when you look at our revised by school membership staffing plan, and you see the negatives for middle schools, those negatives would become maintained, but they would be put onto an additional allocation request, essentially saying, Mr. Johnson, I, it's not necessary to do the actual paperwork, but Mr. Johnson would submit an additional unit allocation request form for an additional AP at his school for next school year, using discipline data to support that that's a necessity. And then we maintain that allocation as long as that need is there, and that may be forever, or that may not be. But as we get to site-based budgeting, we have to, we're going to have to eventually have the conversation that he's not generating enough funds to fund two APs and a principal theoretically. And so the district would have to supplement a smaller middle school like this to ensure that they have the supports they need.
Chair.
Vice Chair. Uh, thank you. And, and I, I like the, the thought process. Um, that leads me to a question, and maybe one more for Ms. Moran, or maybe you've experienced it yourself already, uh, Mr. Johnson. The idea of the, um, unit allocation request, I really like that, because it implies that there is flexibility. It implies that there is trust. It implies that there is really hearing, again, from the trenches, what the needs are. And it says in this version that I'm looking at, blue, and on all the other versions, in another color, units may be added or removed based on student needs, program changes, and/or enrollment changes. And my question around that is, I'm wondering how many site-based leaders have asked for these units and that they feel they need, and how long does that process take? Because while it may look good on paper, again, there's only 180 days in the school year. They, they need what they need, and we have a principal standing up here in front of us, right now, saying that he, what he needs. And, and it doesn't include losing anything.
Madam Chair, if I may? I think Ms. Moran could probably answer that question, but I don't know if you want to do that now, or let Mr. Johnson answer any other questions, so he can get back to.
And we, it's 10:16, so we do, um, we will be having a moment of silence in just a moment. So, um, if, if you'll bear with me for just a moment. So on February 14th, 2018, 17 innocent lives were taken when a murderer opened fire at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Students, teachers, and faculty showed great courage in the face of danger. The sacrifices of these heroes, as well as the brave action of first responders, will never be forgotten. In memory of the lives lost in this tragedy, Governor Ron DeSantis hereby directs that flags were flown at half-staff today on all government buildings and installations and grounds throughout the state, from sunrise to sunset, and also that all residents of the state of Florida will pause for a moment of silence at 10:17 a.m. in honor and memory of those at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. It's 10:17 a.m. Please pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, um, Ms. Moran, I believe we were at a question specific to, for you, I think. That's where we were. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Can you ask the question?
I know.
I apologize.
Ms. Moran, I think, um, so Vice Chair Thrower was asking about the process, and how many have requested that and received those exchanges allocations based on requests from principals? I don't know that Mr. Johnson has all that information. It would have put him on the spot for that. Certainly, I think that HR has that information.
Can we hear it from Mr. Johnson?
But, go ahead.
Um, because I'm, I'm concerned with that process as well. And, and the reason I ask that, because I don't want, I don't ever want a principal to feel like they're out there stroking, trying to get, stay above water, and we have a process that's in place that's hindering them from being successful. So I, I kind of want to hear it from the principal.
I, so I, I don't have personal, um, experience with that process, because I've always had a very small school, so we typically don't, I don't have extra, um, positions typically. However, um, I, I haven't heard anything about it being a negative process. I would, the one thing I would, I think, like to speak to a little bit was what we talked about in elementary conversation. Mr. Carlisle and I mentioned this, and it's just, um, and it might be, and it's, it, it maybe it's semantics or whatever, like, and Ms. James, or Dr. James, uh, alluded to this as well. We would probably, I mean, me, anyway, would like a little bit more flexibility, maybe with some of these naming of, of these positions. Maybe we call them instructional support, but we, as long as, like you guys said, we're, we're upfront with everyone. We, everybody knows what they're getting into, you know, I mean, there's no surprises. I think we got to, there's some stuff with the MESP that we would have to, 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 um, navigate. But I do think that, that, because, I mean, like, I think back to my elementary time, and you, like you say, you talk about the kindergarten pairs being seasonal. I would love to maybe start them in kindergarten, and, and get those kids acclimated, and do all the stuff that we talked about, and then maybe move them to third, fourth, and fifth grade to push in small group, um, things like that. I think that that's a more strategic use of your person than to just, like you say, leave them in kindergarten because they are tied. And I do believe there was a time, if I remember correctly, like maybe in, in the previous administration, where we, they were tied, because that's where we, we would always get, you know, there are, we had, like, when I was at Anthony, for, for instance, we might, I might have, you know, I had a lot of ESE special needs pairs, but they were tied to specific classrooms. I had kindergarten pairs, but they were tied to specific classrooms. So I had very few that I had the flexibility to be able to put with MTSS, or do different things like that. So I think that with that, maybe giving them a little bit, giving principals a little bit more autonomy with some of those positions, and I don't know how that all works exactly. But I think that that would be, uh, a benefit to anybody, just because then you could really use people where they're needed. But that, I mean, that's what I would speak to as far as that goes. But as far as the actual process, I think at the end of the day, us as principals, like, I, I'm sitting here thinking, like, I really don't care how they end up on my, like, whatever you want to say, if you want to add them extra, if you want to do whatever, like, I get it. But I'm, I'm one of those people that my data is going to support me having an APD, and it's going to support me having the extra dean or whatever, um, right now. But I do, you know, I do think about some of my colleagues that maybe the data doesn't, is not off the charts like ours is, um, and, but it still has that need. So I think that's where, um, I, I, you know, I do think that it is beneficial that they have the ability to be able to do that.
And, and Madam Chair, and I asked that question, and I thank Vice Chair Thorpe for going that way about this process, because I do know of principals that, um, have some higher needs in certain areas. And, um, when they've got to that point where they've tried to request it, there's, it's almost like there's a, there's a wall, because the ratios doesn't justify them. But there's a need there, and when I look at this, and it says, based on added, um, based on student needs, program changes, or enrollment changes, I, I feel like this, if the principal's coming saying, there's a need, it's not just his need or her need, it's the student need, and we need to take that into consideration, and not have that red tape or that, that bureaucracy they're trying to, um, hinder. If we can afford it, and it can be done in such a way that we're fiscally responsible, that school needs that support. That's giving this school the support that needs to be successful. If they're saying, I need a, a dean, or whatever it is, something in discipline, or whatever it is, and we're saying, no, you can't have them, and then we're expecting them to do the same amount of work, plus, 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 um, it doesn't work. That doesn't work for me. That doesn't work for that school. That doesn't, that doesn't, that's, that makes people say, I can't handle this job. I'm quitting. I'm walking away from, I'm walking away from the field. And we've had a lot of folk do that because of, uh, being supported, so.
Well, and I think that would be the fear too, is like, if you take it from the staffing plan, and, and we rely on having it added because of a need every year, then you, you, you do, as the principal, I, I go up against the, you know, but if I do ask, they, they do have the potential to tell me no. You know what I mean? And, you know, it's not that it's automatic because I have a need.
Right.
Then, then they could still, still tell you no. So then it's a little bit more, you feel a little bit more comfortable with it written in there, obviously.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson.
Madam Chair, if I may comment on, um, the exchange and opportunity for request. If it is the board's intention for it to be a yes, then it shouldn't be part of the exchange. The, the definition of need is broad, and if it's an expectation that it's an automatic yes, then that process is not intended to do that. I'm not on that committee. I let the, the team do that. Um, but I have walked a school with a principal in, in recent months and said, you know, I said, tell me about this, and they said, yeah, it was denied. And I said, okay, well, let me see what I can find out, just because it's something I personally observed as an instructional leader. Um, but it's not an automatic yes. So to this discussion, I think that's important for the board to recognize.
Vice Chair.
Yes, uh, thank you for that, because I almost feel like that a statement might be more clear, that u, u, units may be added or removed based on unanticipated student needs. You know, we're trying to anticipate here. We're trying to be proactive. We're trying to hear you and put things in place that you know that you need. And, you know, if 20 kids from the Ukraine come to Anthony Elementary School all of a sudden, four families, that's definitely going to be an unanticipated need that, that we just couldn't foresee. So that's my statement on that.
And thank you, Dr. Gullett, for that as well. I, I think we all have heard stories of, of requests that had been denied for one reason or another. I, I mean, I think that that's potentially part of the reason that conversation was occurring. It, it causes challenges whenever we are talking about being fiscally responsible and saying yes to every need. And that's our, that's our challenge right now. I, I have concerns about these numbers of, and I'm speaking specifically to the 5.3 million dollars that we're looking at, that would be in addition to what we were looking at for a staffing plan. I, I am, I, this board member is not comfortable with reducing any staff at the middle school level. The one thing that I heard from every middle school principal I spoke with, and it was at least half of them, was that they need additional support for testing facilitators and teacher observations. And so i, if we're taking away specifically from three middle schools, as indicated on this, who's going to do some of that work that's so valuable, and they're already spread so thin? So I am not comfortable with taking away either, uh, specifically here. I, I would potentially be comfortable if we are sticking with ratios, and it seems as if we are. Um, for the bookkeeper position to actually be at 1,500 students instead of 1,300 students, that would have us only adding one bookkeeper. Uh, but having conversation with both of the principals that this would impact, it seemed as if one principal that needed it the most was at 1,500 students, as opposed to 1,300. So that one change I would recommend. Um, but beyond that, that's what I see on the middle school staffing board. Do you have any additional questions of Mr. Johnson? Would love for him to be able to get back to his school. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Chair, may I also, um, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being here. We appreciate you. So to the, to the whole conversation, again, about staffing and the additional units, the other concern I would have from a fiscal, um, perspective would be, it, it's not as apparent how much we're spending on positions. So I, Ms. Moran, I really don't want to put you on the spot, or Ms. Boston Ellis, do you happen to have the cost of the additional allocations we provided to schools because of that exchange and the request based on need? Would you have any idea how much that is? No, but we can get that to the board. Again. Again, you don't see that upfront, because it's not part of this, but I know that there are a number of positions that have been allocated, so.
I think that would be some good information to have, where there have been additional requests, and to know how much that has costed us in the past.
Ms. Morant, do you have any idea how many positions have been allocated that are outside of that ratio based on that process?
Thank you. There's a sheet, so mark totally for me, it's 31 right now.
31 positions have been allocated that are not on the staffing plan ratio.
Thank you. Can y'all send that to us?
That can, you should, you should have it. What I'll need to do is update and get you the costs associated with that.
Thank you.
And some of those are through unit exchange, and some of those are through just an additional unit request. So there are two ways that schools are able to request that.
And who makes the, who makes the final determination when there's a unit request?
So there's a joint.
Whether it's not or approved.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a joint committee made up of our three chiefs, so our chief academic officer, chief financial officer, and chief operations officer, and I'm there as well. So that decision is a collective conversation based on the information that's provided from the school and the area superintendent supporting the request.
So the school, I'm just talking about, I guess the school, the principal requested from their area superintendent?
Yes.
And that superintendent brings it to the chiefs?
Correct.
And how fast is that process?
It depends, and just to be as transparent as possible, there's been a request that took a month, and there has been a request that we've turned around in a week, and there are different things that makes that up. So there was one request where they asked, the school asked for an additional dean based on need, but we needed data to support that need, so once they sent that need, and then it was scheduling, so getting the four of us on the same day we shoot for Mondays. But the longest, I think, has probably been about a month.
Thank you.
Yes, so we do have the numbers of individuals, we just don't have the individual costs.
Yes, and I can send that at a later time.
Right. And it does look like, well, not all, but some of these additional allocations are specific to transformation schools, not all, but some of them.
Any other questions or thoughts on middle school? And I'm assuming, and I don't know if we need to pause each page, are we going to go over everything, then come back and determine what the consensus is of the group, or do we want to do that at each section? And I'm just thinking mainly because we have Mr. Carlisle here.
I think we should go on to high school now, and have Mr. Carlisle come help us so we can get him back to Vanguard. Thank you for waiting so patiently. We appreciate you, Mr. Carlisle. Thank you for taking my call yesterday. One of the many.
Good morning. Just about the process, it was a pleasure to serve on the committee. This is my second year doing it, and I enjoy, I enjoy the work of the committee, I enjoy, or I'm honored to represent my peers. After the first meeting, I did go back, solicit feedback from my peers, had conversations with a few of them. As Mr. Johnson said, we, you know, we bring our ideas, it's kind of blue sky, but I also, we also understand there's a cost factor to everything that we ask for. Ultimately, for the high school level, we did not feel that we could, you know, substitute anything for any of the things that we really wanted, so in the interest of not losing anything, we decided to kind of keep what we've had the last year. Our biggest priority for me, the high school level, I think, was to account for our larger schools, so Westport and Forest, making sure that they have adequate staff to support the significantly larger population that they have. And I see in the staffing plan that that is, you know, that's been, that's been considered, and I know that Westport gets several additional staff members, so that's important, because with 2,900 students, they certainly need it.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. I know I had conversation with you and several principals yesterday, specific to the ESAL paraprofessionals, because that was something that was left out of the original staffing plan conversation. Do you mind speaking to that for just a moment?
Yes, absolutely. We have seen a pretty decent influx of ESAL students come in to our school. I know my school specifically, but I'm sure I speak for everybody when I say, we have quite a few new ESAL students that arrive. I think I'd be allocated two additional ESAL pairs, I would absolutely use them. Right now, I have one, she's amazing, but she is stretched thin. I can speak, we've seen, I have a Ukrainian refugee, you know, she doesn't speak any English, and their alphabet, I think, is different than ours, so that alone takes a tremendous amount of time. We've seen quite a few students coming in from Venezuela, Cuba, Puerto Rico, obviously, but, you know, we do have a higher population than we have had, at least when I got to Vanguard five years ago. So it would be helpful.
Thank you. Board, any additional questions of Mr. Carlisle? Vice Chair?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Carlisle. It's always a pleasure to represent Vanguard High School, and I appreciate, you know, our ongoing professional dialogue. It means the world to me that you are straightforward to say, hey, you know, we're rolling along pretty well, here are some areas that we could use more support, and again, it's that type of trusting support that is going to move our needle at an accelerated rate, so I'm grateful to you for that.
Appreciate you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carlisle.
Anything else? Sorry, you paused, I thought you were finished. You just said, thank you.
He was just taking a breath.
Thank you for the input that you've given into this process, and for the high school part of this. I think Vanguard being one of the schools that is kind of like in the middle, the top, you know, as far as population and stuff, it's a good, it's a good school to kind of use to gauge the district, so thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it, Mr. Carlisle. Thank you so much. We appreciate you and for being a part of this process.
Wonderful. So with high school, in comparison to our last version, the only thing we were adding is the ESAL paraprofessional, and again, based on that E L L population ban that Ms. Hughes spoke about earlier.
Board, my only question, and I, all the principals I spoke with yesterday, specific to ESAL paraprofessionals, were grateful, similar to what Mr. Carlisle has just stated to us, that that is a significant need, that I can't see us not putting emphasis there, at least that's my perspective. From the assistant principals, and the addition of two assistant principals on two of our campuses, and speaking with both of those principals about that yesterday, I'm not certain if there's a way we can adjust the ratios or what have you, I'm not certain that that's where, if they were to gain two new positions, that they potentially would take one assistant principal, but may put that other person into something else. And so as long as we're okay with understanding that they may adjust their unit based on student need, and that they might not utilize a second, or actually would be what, a sixth A P?
I'm sorry, I'm cutting you off, go ahead.
No, it's okay, I'm just trying to, if they're not going to potentially utilize a sixth assistant principal, and they might be able to use that extra allocation somewhere else, then if we're okay with that, obviously that changes the cost on what that might be, and so that's where the trading of individuals, I know I asked that one time, where we, we talked about that very briefly at one time, but it's not dollar for dollar, it's person for person. And so certainly, and I know principals do this, and we've talked about that, that they're going to use their Title I dollars for the things that, you know, they may put two people using Title I versus putting that expensive person off on the district. And so I understand that happens, but still, that money comes from somewhere, and so we're going to have to figure out what that looks like. So, Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may, I think it's an important time to have Ms. Morant speak to, if there's an exchange, we have to be mindful as the employer of personnel changes. If there's a change in leadership at the school, another instructional leader may come in and have a very different opinion of what they want to do with personnel, we have to be mindful of that as the district. So, Ms. Morant, can you speak to, if that exchange is made, what the guarantee is, or what the obligation is, and what that looks like?
Sure, and I will say, as far as exchanges that I've been a part of, that has been probably the scenario for the greater, the majority of the requests, where the prior principal had a need, and they requested something, and now the new principal, that's not the need they have, and they exchanged it. So we have this conversation in the unit control meeting, what that looks like, what do we want to solidify as far as that process? And one of the things, so we don't have people every year coming in, switching up, we want them to be committed to that at least for an additional year. So you request it this year, but you also have that the next year. And so, one reason, it addresses that personnel issue, and it also puts some deeper thought back into our principals, so they're able to think through and ensure that this is something, I don't want to say that they'll be stuck with, but a decision that they're not making lightly because they know they have this process, let me come and switch everything up, okay, next year, I don't like that, let me switch it up, but it really puts a lot back on that principle, and it does assist with budgeting as well, and be able to know that, okay, this position, they won't be exchanging this position at least for another year. And I did want to, when I was being rude and jumping in, I wanted to point out, when we were discussing at the last work session, we did indicate that the A Ps would be a position, or category, that we are able to exchange out after the initial for an instructional support staff. So I can ensure that that's notated, if that's still the direction or desire of the board.
I mean, I think the, giving the principal the autonomy to know where that is great, where their greatest needs are, I, they know their schools better than we do, and again, I loved what Mr. Johnson said, need not numbers. I wrote that down, because you couldn't explain what I've been saying more than just that, those three little words, need not numbers, because everything we're doing here today is based on numbers, and that's philosophically not where I think we need to be driving this bus. But as long as we absolutely understand that an assistant principal and that unit allocation can be exchanged for something based on the needs of the school. Vice Chair?
Thanks, and yes, numbers are dollars, and need drives placement. You know, what are the needs of each and every one of our schools? And also being mindful that, you know, with new principals that we have, we have, just like in our teaching cadre, we have some very seasoned teachers, and we have some very seasoned principals, and some new principals. And it would make sense to me that the new principals probably need and want and should expect, you know, support and guidance as they make their decisions, and a lot of encouragement. Some of my guiding lights are, as I think through this, is that it does take three to five years to create any culture change. And so, my prayer is, is that the great principals that we have will stay, that they'll be in, that they feel well-placed, you know, at their schools, and they're already actively excited for next year, because we have to do so much planning in advance. And I think it's also super important to always emphasize that, yes, you know, we have a very large budget, we also have very large needs, and all of that money, it doesn't come from Title I, it doesn't come from these categories, it comes from the people, it comes from the taxpayers. And with that in mind, we have to make sure that everything that we're doing is focused on return on investment. And our investment, of course, is our kids, and our people, and everything that we do here. So I continue to be really appreciative of staff's time, the superintendent's time. None of us are satisfied at where we are as a district. You know, if we were, there would be no need for deep conversation, you know, we would just go, go along, get along, and keep the status quo, but that's just not, you know, the game here, or any game any of us are interested in playing. So I do want to reiterate, and I know you've heard it from other board members already today, that we are, you know, in this to win it, right along with the rest of you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So where does that put us?
In need of $5.3 million.
I know. Board, would we like to take a 10-minute break? We've been going for an hour and 45 minutes or so. It's 10:42, let's take a 10-minute recess, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.[344.43]
And Ms. Marant, pardon me, I stepped out for a second briefly, and I think it was right in the middle of the conversation of how long it typically takes when data is provided to, for another unit allocation.
So it's, the ones I participated in, they've been, they've ranged from one week to one month. And some of the things are, the considerations that go into that is if we need additional information. And then also scheduling a meeting with the unit control team. But our goal, we really strive to have a meeting every Monday when there's a need. But sometimes just based on the schedules, it's hard, and then also getting additional information from the schools.
I see, okay. And it sounds to me possibly like some defined procedures around that request may take care of that lag time. Because I really like the concept, you know, I really do, because that's real time. And to be responsive, I just think it's a great guideline. And I think that with some procedures around it and making it really clear where you find the form, you know, just in the hecticness of the day to day, I can see how it could feel like one more thing to do even though you know you need it. So.
And I will say, even with the form, we try not to allow that to hinder. So even if they submit the information via email, we take it to unit control, we can have them fill out, and we have had them complete the form on the back end and then gather signatures.
I see, I see. And I would like to hope that it's the data that's the most important piece.
Yes.
If you're going to come with a request, you know, even though it's been a desperate day, you know, please share your data. And let's make sure that that data is really easily available and can just transmit it out there and make the process.
And the area suits, they do assist a lot with that process and gathering that information for submission to us.
Great, okay. Thank you.
So Board, I'm interested in a little bit different ratio, and I'm not sure if you are on assistant principal, but entertain this thought process that I'm having. If we have three, I'm looking at the original staffing plan that we started with, that there were three assistant principals for high school. And then we potentially could add a fourth at 2,000 students and a fifth at 2,500 students. That would still ensure that Westport, which is our largest school, would be receiving one more AP than they currently have. And it would also ensure that Forest was receiving one more than they currently have.
And then that would take care of not taking away, because that's my biggest concern, you know. I don't know how we can't be responsive to that when we have had, you know, great principals standing before us this morning, sharing that they need what they need. And then others that would be getting more saying, I don't feel comfortable getting more if that means my colleagues that have demonstrated a need will be getting less. I just can't support that.
So I, we didn't, and the ratio that we received on this little spreadsheet show that any schools would be losing. So I think that if we went back to the original look here, that everybody would have one APC, API, APD. And then we would have an additional AP added at 2,000 students, and then still a fifth AP added at 2,500 students. That changes the ratios. I mean, it, we had original, in the draft version three, it has us at one to eight forty-nine, and then eight fifty to eleven ninety-nine and all of that. But I, and I haven't worked in a high school, but this is an assumption of my, on my part, so I welcome the feedback from someone who wants to clarify. But I would be of the mindset that an APC, an API, and an APD are needed on all high school campuses. And maybe that's just an assumption on my part, but I think that's going to be regardless of if you have 1,000 students or if you have 2,900 students. That those three positions are probably needed.
Looking at that, when do they get, wait, am I reading this wrong? When do they get the third?
Well, what the draft three says, they get the third when they're each 1,200 students.
No.
No. Okay, I'm trying to, no, it's very confusing. Two.
It goes from two to four. So is the.
So it should be, they would get one APC for enrollments of one to eight forty-nine.
Right.
For enrollment of eight fifty to eleven ninety-nine, they would, in addition to the APC, they would get an API or APD. And then the same thing, they would get that third allocated unit for enrollment of 1,200 to 1,699.
Okay, I just see the line drawn through the one through three.
And we.
Oh, that's in here, thank you.
Yeah, and we have one school that's barely over that 1,200 mark. So I'm very concerned about dictating ratios on high school assistant principals. Because if for any reason that school falls below 1,200 and hits 11,97, I'm not pulling, this board member is not saying that they don't need one of these AP positions. That's why, I know we went to ratios, and I know that's what this whole dialogue has been about ever since the first day we talked about school staffing plans. But I, this board member feels that an APC, an API, and an APD is needed on every high school campus. And then we add based on numbers after that. And the number that I'm comfortable with is they get one more at 2,000 students and two more at 2,500 students, or another, an additional at 2,500 students. So that does shift, you know, that's an addition of three instead of five on this plan. Board, I'm interested in your thoughts on that.
So it's just saying that a school that doesn't have 850 students, a high school.
But it doesn't, that doesn't exist.
Right.
Right.
The only thing that comes close to existing is North Marion High School with 1,270 students enrolled.
So all of our schools are over 1,200?
Correct.
It's 1,200 plus.
So we've created ratios to drive what we've already, what we already have in place. So I just, what I want to ensure that if we are putting in a staffing plan, ratios, and that dictates staffing. If in fact, for whatever reason, North Marion High School fell at that 1,197 number, that they all of a sudden would only have two APs, and I'm not comfortable with that.
Well, just let that be the base, you know.
The base.
The base would be the three APs, which is where we started, right, which is exactly what I was saying. So if we went back to the original plan.
Version one.
Version one, for AP high school specific, that's all we're talking about right now. We went back to version one, but where it said API at 2,700 plus, we would just say an additional AP at 2,000, and then another AP at 2,500. So that would give Westport High School two extra assistant principals next year and would give Forest High School one extra.
No, Westport already has four, so they would get one additional next year.
Okay, then they would get one additional, I'm sorry. Correct.
Well, base, they would get one additional base, and then it gets to the unit request.
Right, so the maximum number on this would be five assistant principals. Instead of six.
Instead of six. Without taking away from current needs.
Correct. It wouldn't adjust what, everybody would already have what they currently have, but Forest would be receiving an extra, and Westport would be receiving an extra.
Which considering they're both the size of small townships, they need the support. The question is, how much can, how much more support can we afford? And then if they request it, and just, I don't even want to say justify, they provide the data, then we need to be responsive. And put that to work.
Dr. Gallett, do you have thoughts on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the ratios, it is my recollection that the reason that these ratios are here is because the board wanted ratios consistent across levels in a prior conversation. So I just want to be clear about that, because that's why the team came back with the ratios, because that was the request of the team. And I'm now hearing again about the exchange. I just want to be clear so that no one is later disappointed or concerned that the process didn't work as planned. So if it is the intention of the board to have a position in there, I wouldn't say let's rely back on the exchange. There's a process in place. And while I think it's not perfect, I think it's a process in place that continues to be tweaked and adjusted. Our commitment is helping and supporting schools. But I don't want there to be a concern from anyone that something was not approved, and later it said, you have this process and you didn't approve it, because it's a process. It's a procedure. It's not a guarantee. So I just don't want there to be concern later that we were not transparent about that.
And the unit process is new, you know, the unit request process is new. And keeping in mind how difficult it's been to communicate out because of the whole COVID thing, and half of our staff being out half the time. You know, it makes it pretty difficult to make things clear. And sure, you know, on paper, I'm fine with having the bigger schools have more. That is one aspect of measurement that doesn't, not make sense going by numbers. But then we also just had a big conversation and heard directly from principals that while their numbers may not reflect that need, that the needs are certainly there. So it's all, it's all part of the bigger picture. And trying to find a compromise where the bigger schools are getting more support without taking away from schools that may not on paper be so large in their numbers, but definitely have the needs. So I feel like what I'm hearing is providing another step towards greater support while still supporting what we already know is needed. And, you know, for $5.3 million, we could just say yes, and this would be over. We could all go to lunch and. But there's more to it, you know, we haven't even had conversation yet about, you know, district staffing plan. And how, as Dr. Gallett shared, very important that the referendum, how that money is going to be allocated. You know, we continue to be stuck with having a lot of need and evidently finite resources. So as a bit of a compromise, while still acknowledging the current situation, I think that the Chair's proposal has merit.
Works for me. Okay, so it, Reverend Cummings?
I'm good.
Okay, so while it is still an increase from our previous, from the starting point, it's not as much of an increase as was proposed in draft three. Okay? Other items in high school. We heard specifically about the school counselor line that mentions about substituting for instructional support. Is there a way that we can remove that line as an option that specifically for school counselors? That school leaders would not have the ability to choose? Is that what I think the question is? Mr. McGowan, do you mind speaking to that?
Why, but that is the request.
Because the, first of all, I'll ask two questions of you, Mr. McGowan, as you're walking. Are you comfortable with the ratios specifically for high school that we now have indicated on the new draft? And then secondarily, is it the request that we would remove that line that's currently in blue?
Yes, I am comfortable with the current ratios at all three levels. I think that, and I want to start by saying I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the recognition of the need of our school counselors. This would, by my count, add approximately 20 units, K-12 of school counselors, which I definitely think is needed. It would lower our overall district counselor-to-student ratio by more than 100, which is significant. My concern with how it's written for the school to be able to have the ability to turn that into another instructional unit is not a concern now. With the additional units, we would, like I just mentioned, we would see a significant improvement in our ratios. But moving down the road, I'll just take Fort King Middle as an example. They have approximately 1,500 students, they have three school counselors. Let's say two, three years from now, two of those three counselors decide to transfer to another school, retire, or whatever it may be. The principal now has to hire those two counselor units. To your point, we do have a struggle with hiring school counselors. It is one of the only job classifications, one of the few that I am aware of that is an instructional unit that requires by the state a master's degree. It is extremely hard to recruit school counselors unless they have the passion for it, and that's what we rely on. So if a principal runs into any delay or hardship in hiring a school counselor, it would be very easy for them to say, okay, well, I can't find anyone. I'm going to turn this into a CAS position, or whatever the case. And I sympathize with that. It's, I've worked at a school, it's all hands on deck. So any support, so I get their mindset with needing that additional instructional support. But in this example, that would leave Fort King Middle with one counselor for 1,500 students. So moving forward, although we're drastically improving the ratios now, potentially down the line, we're setting ourselves up to create an increase in those ratios, which isn't the goal of what I've heard today, to create that consistency with the ratios in time. This could potentially harm those ratios significantly. And I have concern with that as our school counselors are one of the three identified mental health providers in statute. In this day and age, with the mental health support that's needed, that potentially down the road, not saying it would happen. But if the principal had the, you know, the autonomy to make that decision, because of the difficulty in finding certified school counselors, it would be easy for a principal to turn that into another unit, which would then severely harm those ratios and that support that school counselors can provide down the road. Not necessarily now, because we're, you know, adding several more units, which is good in the short term. But that would just be a concern I would have moving forward.
So since we're talking guidance counselors, and we'll get back to high school, because, but while you're here, let's talk a bit more about the elementary and the middle school. Because overall, you're right, there's a significant increase in guidance counselor support through this. Do you see the need for elementary school counselors in the way we have included them from a ratio perspective? Because my understanding of guidance counselors at the high school level, certainly basically 1 to 500 students or so is our ratio there at the highest. Then that, they're ensuring we're working with graduations, we're working with, ensuring that they're following their requirements for what they need. And in elementary school, most of us grew up with one guidance counselor in our entire elementary school, regardless of how large the school population was. So I'm just, I'm interested in knowing a bit more about how you feel specifically on elementary school ratios with us considering adding 18 guidance counselors.
Well, I'll start by saying I do believe that it's needed, and I hope that I can articulate my thoughts well here. But at a school, it's, like I mentioned before, it's all hands on deck. So the more staff you have, lessens the load for everyone involved. At the elementary level, if you have a school with, let's say, 700 students, and you have one school counselor, that school counselor is not just doing school duties. They're a team player, they're part of the school community, so they're involved in many other different activities on campus. And so if you add a second unit, then that will not only, it'll lighten the load for everything else that they may be involved in. But particular with school counseling task, when you have a ratio of 1 to 700, and now you're at 350, for example, it just provides more opportunity, more time. That you can spend, you know, when I, just another example, and I know you asked about elementary, but just an example of Fort King again. So right now, the ratio is about 540 students per counselor. If I, on average, met with 10 students a day, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you add in lunch duty and bus duty and anything else that counselors help with, if I'm able to see 10 students a day, I'm not seeing every student on my caseload to the 54th day of school. That means I'm seeing every student on campus three times a year, 15, 20 minutes. So from my perspective, that's where the ratios really matter. So, you know, the national recommended ratio, which I know no state or district is close to, it's 1 to 250 students. So we're not quite double that now, this would significantly reduce that. But that's where the value would come in, is that it's more interaction with those students and those families, the lower that ratio can be. But it's also, I think, more valuable that, just like the intent of this ability to turn it into another unit, if, even if that remains another counselor, counselors do above and beyond what's in their job description. They're helping with many other factors on a school campus. So if you're able to hire another unit, and most of what I've been able to see at the elementary level, we're going from one unit to two. Because most of our elementary schools are above 500, we're between the 500 and 800 mark. So most of our elementary schools will go from 1 to 200. That additional person not only helps with the ratios for the school counseling task, but also the workload on campus, which I think is what the caveat is trying to address. It's another instructional person on campus to lighten the load of the other things that we have to do to make a school function.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Additional questions for Mr. McGowan, Board?
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. I strongly believe that school counselors are vital, especially as the kids progress upward through their academic career. I think that you can't, I ask questions, I ask a lot of questions of parents and students, and I ask them, how often do you talk to your counselors? How often do you have the ability to talk to your counselors? Some kids have never had the opportunity to talk to their counselors because the caseloads are so great. So I think by us, this board being proactive and looking at this, these numbers, this, sometimes I think we don't understand how important those counselors are because it could start helping kids at an early age, start getting on the right path, and setting themselves up for success in taking the right track of classes if they're going to college, or if they're going to the military, or whatever, or getting scholarships, all those types of things. So I'm glad that this board is deciding to look at how those caseloads are dispersed and making sure that we're adequately addressing it. I know that national averages, what'd you say, 250, 2?
Yes, sir. Nobody's, nobody's crossed the country, he's probably reaching that.
That would be great if we could one day get there, but I think we need to try to move in that direction instead of away from that direction. So thank you for talking about that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McGowan. I think that it's interesting whenever we start thinking of the impact potentially of an increase in school counselors at our elementary school. Would it be having that forward impact on potentially reduction of discipline issues at the middle school level? If there is relationship built at the elementary school level, mental health services being able to be taught and offered earlier on based on caseloads? That's something we haven't looked at from a data perspective, because it's not something that we've ever incorporated into our plan. So thank you for that, it's a valuable perspective.
Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you, and yes, thank you, Mr. McGowan. And just a quick confirmation, at the elementary level, guidance counselors are, truly serve as the gateway, I think, to services. Is that accurate? And think, like you said, thinking forward and being proactive. If a student early on has that contact and interaction, then that triggers all kinds of planning and supports for students. We have a lot of kids where it takes too much time, the whole timeline of identifying, first of all, realizing there's a problem, then identifying the need, and then, you know, having all the meetings, and then, you know, getting them the services. So if we can do more to ensure that that process happens earlier, that lines up completely with all of the early indicators of success and everything that we talk about of what's going to position kids for success moving forward, and hopefully keep them out of very restrictive environments.
Vice Chair Thor, thank you for saying that, because you just chopped my mind, memory or something. And I'm just trying to recollect, they are a part of the IEP team, correct? The guidance counselor, not the guidance counselor, the counselor. Because some of that stuff they initiate. Am I saying that right, Mr. McGowan? They are a part of it. They are a part of the IEP, and that helps us with, I get, I get a lot of things saying, my kid hasn't been assessed for ESE and for all these other things. But the guidance counselor plays a major, that's one of their duties, if I'm not mistaken.
Absolutely, and I think that's one of the misconceptions too, is when we hear the word counselor, we're thinking of sitting in our office, meeting with students one-on-one all day. And that couldn't be farther from the truth. It's participation on IEP teams, facilitating 504 meetings, participating on the multidisciplinary team, being part of the team that does suicide and threat assessments, working with students in crisis. It's all of that, and to Ms. Thoreau's point, they're a lot of times the conduit between the school and community agencies that they need to loop in to assist and provide support to the student. You know, and it could even be through the multidisciplinary team process, working with our social workers and our contract of mental health counselors to provide that more in-depth counseling if needed, things like that. So a lot of times they are bridging that gap between, you know, the students' needs and the services that are available, absolutely.
Thank you. I just, I remember, I've sat on many IEPs, and I just thought, I was like, wait a minute, that's a part of that ESE, IEP.
Absolutely.
Product, and oftentimes we keep saying, we kind of get behind on some of those things, but they can help initiate.
Absolutely, and to your point you made earlier about, and Ms. Thoreau, it's about the proactiveness versus the reactiveness. And that's what school counselors provide, whether it be with student discipline, student behaviors, academic. At the high school level, that's certainly where we've always strived to move those students to whatever their post-secondary goals are. However, when you have a caseload of 500 or 600 students that you're trying to make sure at a minimum, and we, our goal isn't the minimum, but at a minimum, we need students to meet graduation requirements to graduate. And when we're tracking 5, 600 students to make sure that happens, it is very difficult to have meaningful time to have conversations with post-secondary plans. And so that's naturally, by lowering the ratios, that helps facilitate more time for those conversations.
And that's been an age-old problem.
Absolutely.
That has, that's, I can remember going here at high school, I saw my high school counselor three times in all four years. Once when I got in, when I came in, once in 10th grade, and the one time my senior year to find out what I was going to do after high school. So I'm praying we're at a much better place than that now, and hopefully this will help.
Agreed. So while Mr. McGowan's there, and while we're talking counselors, let's get back to high school in just a moment. But let's go ahead and address counselors across the board, since we're there. So what this looks like based on the numbers we've been given, guidance counselor numbers will not change at high school because they're already set based on ratio. The question of what Mr. McGowan had noted is the words in blue right now that say may substitute for instructional support for allocations greater than four. That's what it says at the high school level. Are we comfortable with removing that? Per Mr. McGowan's commentary?
Removing it at the high school, or removing it altogether?
Well, this one specifically at the high school is, so that's why I'm starting there, and then I'm working backwards. Because this one is specifically at substituting it for instructional support at greater than four. So at high school, they automatically have four based on this. But if they had going up, then they could substitute for instructional support. Should we?
Unless there are planned retirements or job vacancies for high school for next school year, it's null because they won't be able to exchange with an existing person sitting in the guidance counselor position, right, Ms. Marant? So you can get rid of that this year, and we can talk about it next year for high school. Because it, again, unless the job is going to become vacant, it's impossible to happen.
Okay, so then let's take it off for high school, because it doesn't matter, based on what we're talking about. Okay, so at middle school, it does say may substitute for instructional support for allocations greater than one.
Might as well get his thoughts on middle and elementary.
Right, so based on middle school and these ratios, what it looks like for us is we would be adding guidance counselors at two schools, but we would not have any reduction. We do have reductions in guidance clerks. So is guidance clerk a support to a guidance counselor, or is that some different position that doesn't fall under mental health?
We keep just saying guidance counselor is school counselor.
School counselor.
Right, but I'm, it's school counselor on the staffing plan, guidance counselor on this. So I think.
They're synonymous.
They're synonymous, I believe.
Are they?
The new term is school counselor.
Okay.
It used to be guidance counselor, but it's.
Provide guidance and all kinds of other stuff.
Thank you. On this spreadsheet we have, we'll change that to school counselor. Thank you for that correction.
In my opinion, I think looking at this, the bigger concern is probably at the middle school level. school level. I think at the elementary level, when we get to 7, 8, 900 students, I think our schools know the value in having two school counselors there. One cannot manage that. High school, we've established, I think that's appropriately staffed. Middle school is where my concern would lie because if you have a situation where a school is just under the number for an additional unit, the concern is where it says anything more than one allocation. So, high school, it's four, you know, anything above four. Elementary is one, but then middle school is still one. So, if they have three school counselors or four in the future, then I could potentially have four counselors and then in the future go down to one. Whereas at the elementary example, it still has to have an allocation of one. So, if the max I have is two, I choose to use one for another function, I have one counselor. But, so, that's an impact, but not as significant as if I had four counselors at middle and now I go down to one.
So, do you recommend the substitution allocation of greater than three? Or just remove the line altogether that the substitution allocations aren't allowed at all?
Well, personally, you know, my opinion would be to remove it altogether, to protect our school counselors and the work they do. However, that being said, I'm sympathetic to what our principals mentioned and where they're at because there's other support that's needed, and I fully recognize that, and I don't want to diminish that. But from a school counselor perspective, we wouldn't want to do all the work we're doing now to recognize the need to lower the ratios, and then by something we put in default later, then that's, all that work is undone. So, if a school is used to having three school counselors that are in middle school, for example, and then all of a sudden we go down to one, now granted, that would be the principal's prerogative to make that decision, and I understand that, but we're still going down from three school counselors to one and what that would impact for the counseling services that we provide.
If I may, I just want, if the alternative is to have a vacancy, which is better?
Certainly to fill it.
Okay, and if it, and if it has to be filled with someone who's either willing to sign in out of field or has the qualifications, and that someone doesn't exist, then it will be vacant unless we add this asterisk. And then there will be no value in having the extra unit because it will be unfillable. Because if we had, we have, how many guidance counselor or school counselor vacancies do we have in this exact moment? Or in your most recent recollection?
None at this moment. We have two that are funded through the mental health allocation that are not filled. But to your point, we have several of our school counselors that are out of field that, to Chair Campbell's point, did come out of the classroom, and that's a legitimate concern. I did that when I was a counselor, I was a teacher, became a counselor when out of field, and it takes those individuals that have a passion for that work. It's not additional pay or anything like that. But to your point, certainly we want it to be filled for the benefit of the school. My concern would only be if, let's say we have two units, it would be very easy because it can be difficult to fill those positions to not have a good faith effort to fill that with a school counselor and turn it into another unit, which if that's what the school needs, completely understand that, but then we are taking away from the counseling services that we've identified as a need.
Can we just change then from saying one to two so that there is a bare, a two requirement, and the individuals that are adding beyond two would be able to sub out that third for a testing coordinator or whatever if they deemed it appropriate and necessary?
Like I say, for me, the middle school is a bigger concern because there could be such a drop-off in support because it only says an allocation of one.
I'm more comfortable with greater than three, frankly. If we're saying greater, if we originally, even though we just said we take it off, if we originally said greater than four at the high school level, and you're telling me that middle school is the area that you're most concerned about, then I don't want to have the opportunity for those that potentially have three or four to be able to go down to one, and I think that's the concern you're expressing. So, if we gave them the opportunity to sub for instructional support for allocations greater than three, then that would impact how many schools? One?
I'm also seeing some, an incorrection though, too. Bellevue Middle, do they have three, three school counselors or four?
They currently have three. When I reviewed ratios personally yesterday, based off the ratios, I believe they should have four, but I believe it's indicated to have three.
So, that's just something I noticed on here that would, I think, is an oversight.
They're at 1546 on a.
So, they would, they would be gaining, they would be a plus one as well in addition to Fort King and Lake Weir, is that correct?
They, they're listing on their website, they have a sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade coordinators, or counselors, excuse me, school counselors, so that is three, and based on the unit allocations, it does look like they would be adding a guidance, or school counselor. Gotta get that word.
Oh, Chair Campbell, then the recommendation of three or more, it would only impact Bellevue Middle in that situation because that would be the only one that would be at four.
So, then do we want to say greater than two?
That would be my suggestion.
Greater than two? Okay, you have consensus on that for middle school, and then at elementary school, while we still have Mr. McGowan, the ratios here, the cost for this, for 18 additional guidance counselors is 1.3 million. Not saying the need isn't there, I'm just interested in knowing if the ratios are where they need to be on that. Granted, we just heard that 1 to 250 is the national recommendation, but just trying to be fiscally responsible while still doing what's best for students.
I mean, I personally, I think it's appropriate. When I read the numbers, as we currently sit with our current staffing of school counselors at elementary, we're at 1 to 473 students as a ratio. With the proposing units, where we go, we reduce that to 1 to 352. Obviously, that's going to vary, you know, by school, but you could potentially argue that the range between 500 and, I don't have it here, whatever the next threshold is, but anything over 500 to me at the elementary level could certainly warrant two school counselors.
Right.
We have some that are right at that number or maybe 600, but then we have just as many, if not more, that are at the higher end of that threshold, the seven going up to 800, that before now just had the one school counselor.
Okay, so based on the ratios, we do have several additions that we would be making here. This also has the line about substituting instructional support for allocations greater than one. I think that we may have just landed on greater than two if we're, are we sticking with that, or are we going with one for elementary?
I, I'm just going to offer again that I think we will find ourselves in a position where we are posting positions that we can't fill, and if we have to decide, is it more important to have the guidance counselor regardless of what that looks like? Or do we want that principal to be able to fill that vacancy with someone who could serve as a testing coordinator or CAS instead?
So, allowing elementary schools to substitute for instructional support for allocations greater than one? So, for a school that has 975 students, they would have one guidance counselor perhaps?
Which is what they have now.
Right.
Which we know there's a need.
Right. So, this is where we say, and I, to, I understand your point, Dr. James, I do, whether we have a vacant position or not, and also understanding the concern that all of these 18 positions potentially are all coming out of classrooms and we don't have teachers to fill them, so what does that look like for us? And the cost is 1.3 million dollars.
Yes, ma'am, I certainly see the argument, you know, you could take, as just an example, Fort McCoy K5, or I'm sorry, yeah, Fort McCoy at 561, so they're just over the threshold of 500. So, yes, you could certainly argue that if we keep it at anything above one, so maybe one school counselor could fill the need for 561 and use the other unit for something else, but then that threshold is large, so then you go to a school like N H Shonwell, 792, and that's not suitable or capable for one person, so.
But didn't we also just speak to the fact, Board, that we want principals to be able to make that decision and give them flexibility? And if that principal feels like that counselor is meeting the needs of that 749 students, and that, and taking testing off of that guidance counselor's docket would free up their time to provide the counseling that they're supposed to, and then adding an additional person whose sole responsibility is to do testing coordinator and meet in small groups and do those things, we just spoke to that, we want to offer principals that flexibility. So, hand-tying them to, it has to be two counselors regardless, is taking away that flexibility that we were just speaking about trying to offer them. And so, if the principal thinks that it would be more appropriate to post a different position, then I think we should afford the principal that instructional leadership opportunity.
One of the good things about all of this is that we can certainly trial it and get the feedback. Dr. James, you make a great point. We want to provide the flexibility for principals to do what they need to do in real time and get what they need as proactively as possible. So, for elementary, and I also am honoring what Mr. McGowan is saying as well, because what we're trying to do is, is find a way to support as best we can for our current situation.
And Dr. James, I agree with you. I mean, I think at the elementary level, if that principal deems that the way their school is functioning, that one is appropriate, and they want to use the other unit, then I sympathize with that, and I understand that. I think my bigger concern, like I mentioned, was at middle school because the threshold was still at one allocation, and that would cause such a dramatic decrease in services from school counselors where that we wouldn't see that decrease in elementary or high. So, if we made the adjustment for middle school, I think that, that was my bigger concern because we could, it's just such a, the caseload would just increase so dramatically if they decided to change multiple units rather than one.
I have one other question. Does Sunrise have two counselors currently or one?
Two.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I really identify with what you said, Mr. McGowan, because, you know, we know that 48% of our discipline referrals are coming from middle school, you know, where each area of education is very different. So, I think that we're doing the right thing to recognize that and adjust accordingly. Dr. Gullett, I'm interested to hear.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thoreau. I think that major concern that I just keep thinking about is the classroom teacher. I think that they're going to come from somewhere, and I think the vacancies are going to be a real issue. Certainly value and appreciate Mr. McGowan and the advocacy for guidance, and I think we all agree that we need that, but we're in a very difficult time with vacancies, and the workforce is not flowing into our schools. So, it's a tough decision. I think that having a bare minimum, yes, but having some flexibility is what I continue to hear from the principals, right? So, if you're forced with not having an ability to make a decision because I can't fill that, then they're not getting additional support. I think that's, that is the priority. If you make a decision, if you land with, where can we get the most support to our schools with the conditions that we're in?
So, then leaving the line of substituting instructional support for allocations greater than one would land us where these schools would need the flexibility?
Yes, I would support that for elementary.
And while we completely understand that these positions potentially will be coming out of the classroom, at the end of the day, when we're looking at 2,500 potentially teachers, 18 of them is a number, it's just not, you know, we're not saying 150 people are coming out of the classroom to serve in this role. So, granted, they're going to come from somewhere, and perhaps allocating additional guidance counselor resources, I know multiple students that I am teaching right now in college that are all going into mental health and sociology, and that's all, they're really interested in mental health counseling, and just steering them into classrooms with kids is the direction we're going to need to go. So, okay, thank you, Mr. McGowan, I appreciate that. So, it appears that we have landed at least in the school counselor realm, understanding what that cost looks like, but that's where we are.
Chair Campbell, may I confirm for middle school? Are we, did we land on, they may sub for instructional support for allocations greater than two or three?
Two.
Two, thank you.
And elementary stayed at one?
And then we move in high school.
I mean, you can leave it at greater than four if you want, just so they all look the same, but, I mean, based on the conversation we had, it's not going to be impactful for this next year anyway.
So, would you like me to leave it or remove it for high school?
Do you want to leave it or?
I think we said remove it because it, we can always circle back to the conversation next year.
All right, let's remove it for high school.
Thank you.
So, finishing up our high school conversation, so back on these allocations. So, for the guidance clerk, so I do have a question because especially at the middle school level, well, I know we're talking high school, but specifically at middle school, we're losing a lot of guidance clerks, and so I'm not sure what that looks like, but at the high school level, there would be one guidance clerk that we would be losing. So, perhaps I need a little more clarification on what a guidance clerk's position is?
Chair, if I may, where Westport loses the clerk but adds the clerk generalist, which is actually a more general position than the guidance clerk. So, when I spoke to Ms. Morant and principals, they would actually prefer to have the clerk generalist on their staffing plan because it's a more universal position and not as specific to one specific role. So, at Westport, she would simply be able to, that individual who's living as the guidance clerk would transition into a clerk generalist and would have an opportunity to have a more flexible job description.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, Dr. James. And so, based on, just if I'm using the numbers right here, it looks like the cost would be a $20,000 increase. Because if we're having a reduction of a guidance clerk at 37.5, then we would have a, no, excuse me, it would be for two clerk generalists for $20,000 increase. Okay, just trying to do some math. Mr. McGowan, do you want to speak specifically to the clerk generali, or, excuse me, guidance clerk, because we will be talking about that for middle schools?
Sure, yes, ma'am. And I can only speak from my personal experience, but the two guidance clerks that I worked with were in direct support of the guidance office. So, I worked at a high school, and so we had two guidance clerks. So, that ranged from when students came in to see a counselor, they would, you know, welcome them, have them sign in, et cetera. When parents came in to register students, they took the registration process from that point all the way through the counselors meeting with the family to schedule them, maintaining all of the school cumulative folders. So, it really was in support of the guidance office and the functions of the guidance department. But I do understand that that role could vary and look differently on different campuses depending on other support staff, but in my experience, that is the role of the guidance clerk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGowan. So, on the proposal we have in draft version three, it does show that we would put in ratios specific to guidance clerks, and with that, we actually would be losing five units in one each in Dunellen, Horizon, Howard, North Marion, Middle, and Osceola Middle. So, based on that dialogue, I mean, I do think we have just, well, none of those schools are impacted based on the guidance, school counselor conversation we just had, but all of them would be losing that support personnel at the middle school level.
And we just have a long conversation about?
I know, the middle school is where we need it the most. So, then we have to figure out, if we're not going to base it on ratios, what are we basing it on? And how do we dictate that on a school staffing plan? Need, not numbers, is what Mr. Johnson said, but how do you put that?
How do you quantify?
How do you quantify that? Which is philosophically why I disagree with school staffing plans. Can I say that again? So, what does that look like? Obviously, that, I mean, all of this money, the total cost of what all of this is going to look like is going to be significantly more than what we had originally budgeted for, so we know that already. But removing the guidance clerks here was going to get us a bit of that back, but I hear that middle school is where we need the most. hear that middle school is where we need the most guidance support.
And just a note in that same conversation, our guidance clerks are at eight hours and our clerk generalists work six hours, just to have that as a part of your conversation.
Okay, so let me go back to this then. So a guidance clerk at eight hours and we were losing one, so their salary is roughly 37.5, just looking here. So then a clerk generalist must be?
Clerk generalist, 28.5, 76.70.
And they're a six-hour employee, that's interesting. So could we split the difference? Hear me out. Could we transfer those five positions from a guidance clerk to a clerk generalist? And that would save us almost 10,000 a person. I mean, we're going pennies here. I mean, but just trying to figure out how to be fiscally responsible.
I wonder how the middle schools would feel about that, thinking along the lines of a clerk generalist having, being a more flexible type position, would that help them or hurt them?
Not a question I asked. And I don't know that we can get an answer. I don't know if Mr. Frazier wants to speak to that, like, I don't know how we could get that information from them. Just trying to figure out, I mean, if we're using ratios, then we have to figure out what that looks like and... Mr. Frazier, only if you have something to add that can help in this conversation, I'm not trying to put you on the spot for sure.
No, I would just take it back to what our particular Mr. Johnson was referencing. Overall, as a whole, when we start thinking about reduction of support, I think that that's a consideration. We all know that when we're adding things, we have to take something away somewhere, but I'm not sure middle schools are the best route at this point, looking at the discipline data and the mental health needs that we're seeing at the middle school level right now.
I think I concur with that. So then what does it look like on a school staffing plan? Because if we're not using ratios, what are we using? How did it look before? Let's see.
So I was going back to version one, middle school for guidance clerks, one through 199, they would receive two, and 2,000 plus, they would receive three. And that's on version one and we did not change that from what we have currently.
So if we went back to that version one for middle school guidance clerks to be at two guidance clerks for one to 1,999 students and three for 2,000-plus students?
Correct.
Personally, I think I'm more comfortable with that.
Especially based on the conversation of this morning from the folks that are facilitating this work. And that's why having these follow-up work sessions are so important. You know, you start with a framework and there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of conversation generated, there's a lot of new knowledge that comes to that. Some of this is going to circle back around to where we started. I don't consider that a waste of time, I consider that a confirmation. And also, then there's new thinking that comes up that we've been able to make some adjustments, again, based on hearing from the people that are living this every day. So I'm okay with it.
Dr. James, Reverend Cummings?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah, if that's the pleasure of everybody, that's fine with me.
Okay, so that's that guidance clerk position. So I think we've figured that out because that's not an impact, okay. So we're kind of hopping all over the place, but we're trying to check things off.
We're getting there.
We're getting there, we are getting there, so we're keeping track. Okay, back to high school again, because I would like to wrap this high school up and then we can move on. So we do have the addition of the clerk generalists. We just talked about the guidance clerk, so we would not lose the guidance clerk. Granted, that conversation we had was about middle school, but I think we could probably say our high school could use it as well and it's only one. And then the clerk generalists, we would be adding two, and I'm just double checking to see where we were on that originally.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, we will use version one of guidance clerk for high school as well, correct? We won't make any changes there?
I believe that's where we were just talking, yes.
Thank you.
Guidance clerk, I'm just looking again. So this is middle school. Where's my high school one? Here it is. So clerk generalist was one pers, no, generalist, guidance clerk, one to nine, yes, use those same ratios.
Okay, perfect.
That we had on the original for high school, for guidance clerk.
Be back to two, three, four, and four.
Yes, two, three, and four. That's what those numbers were. Now on to the clerk generalist, this was on the original plan to go with the two at 2,000-plus students. So based on that being on the original plan, I think we leave that as is. Okay, and then the last thing to discuss is the ESOL paraprofessionals. And this is something that I feel strongly in and I believe Ms. Hughes is basing it now on the ELL population ban specifically for high school. And if she wants to clarify any more, terrific, otherwise, I know that this cost is going to be upwards of $371,000, but these 12 additional people at the high school level seem to be a need for our principals and our schools there.
I do know this, Chair, is that including in IAP meetings, you know, you need an interpreter, someone that can, or translator, I should say. So, and if we don't have these dedicated people, then you're trying to grab somebody from somewhere to be able to translate. So that's a kind of a real-world example of the need that I've experienced directly.
Okay, so I think we're wrapped up with high school.
May I just repeat it? I just want to ensure I have it correctly. So for high school, each high school, they'll still receive their allocation of one APC, one API, one APD. They will receive an additional API for enrollment of 2,000 or more and then another additional for 2,500 or more. When we're looking at school counselors, we're going to keep the same ratios that we have listed under version three, but we're going to remove the line that says that they may sub for instructional support for allocations greater than one, that will be removed. The guidance clerks, we're going to go back to their original allocation, but we're going to keep the addition of the clerk generalists of an additional one at 2,000 or more and then also keeping the suggested ESOL paraprofessional based on the ELL population ban. Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
So we'll have to see what those actual numbers are, but it's probably going to be, I'm going to say roughly 800,000 as opposed to the 955 that we were looking at, give or take a bit, there may be, I'm just, it may be a little bit under that 800, maybe 750. Just looking at where we're adding and Ms. Boston Ellis is going to figure all this out for us. Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis, thank you, Ms. Morant. Okay, moving on to middle school. So what have we already talked through at the middle school level? So Board, I know that I am not comfortable with removing assistant principals from our smaller schools. So I think going back to the original plan might actually, that one APC and one APD per middle school and then an additional AP. We can talk about staffing at this point. I think each middle school needs an APC and an APD across the board and then let's figure out what the ratio is to get your third and potentially fourth. What did we just do for high school?
If I could just offer, if the conversation for high school surrounded around North Marion High School slipping below 1,200 and they can't afford to lose their third AP, then I would offer the number needs to be 1,200 for them to get a third at middle school. If that is the number that we were holding to for high school, that same need would be present in middle school.
And the original plan for middle school was their third came at 1,500. And so we had adjusted it down to a third AP for 1,200. So that would, and, let's see. So at this point, Bellevue Middle has two, but we think based on the numbers, they should have three.
They would be pushing needing four.
If we went with the draft three plan. The proposal from the original conversation was to have a third at 1,500 and let that be the, and Board, it's up to us if we want to make that number 1,500 or if we want to reduce that 1,200, 1,300, whatever that number might be. At this point, the two that would be impacted if we're over 1,300 for a third assistant principal would be Liberty Middle and Bellevue Middle. So do we want to make the number 1,300 for another AP?
I'm less concerned about what we're doing at high school than I am about the conversation around specifically what we need to do to support middle school. I would share that Liberty Middle School for sure needs more support. So let's make the decision based on, you know, the needs of the actual situations.
So around the original conversation was 1,500 plus, they would receive an extra assistant principal, but it said they may substitute for instructional support, is the way it was originally presented to us.
With the rezoning that's going to occur, Liberty may fall below 1,300, which would then disqualify them if we set the number at 1,300. So if we set the number, I'm going to just go back to the point I just made. If 1,200 is the magic number for high school, then 1,200 should be the magic number for middle school. We just had Mr. Johnson and Mr. Frazier share that middle school probably has the deepest needs of any singular group. So if the number is 1,200, the number in my opinion is 1,200.
And I appreciate that, Dr. James, but the magic number for high school is no longer 1,200 because we just adjusted it.
But your point was that if North Marion Middle slid below the 1,200 number, they would still need to maintain their three, their three assistant principal units. So in theoretical sense, the number is 1,200, because if North Marion Middle can't slide below that or they would lose, then that's important to reference. And so the number of instructional units that need to be observed, the number of students that require testing, all of those things are the same number in all of the secondary places.
And then you have the matter of the discipline. So I would say at least, you know, at the max 1,200 for middle school until those discipline numbers change.
So going back to the original look, that assistant principals at middle school, we would have one APC, one APC and one APD, and then at 1,200 plus, they would receive a third.
But then also at 1,700, they would receive a fourth.
Okay.
Because Bellevue High School is quickly approaching. Now whether he has the capacity to hit 1,700, but, you know, he is, who's to know what those conversations will entail? So I would say we should at least include it so that?
Right, we can only plan for the now and trying to project a little bit too. But yes, I agree with your point.
Okay, so that has us at the assistant principal closer to what we had originally presented, but still with additional numbers based on ratios. Moving on from there, the school counselor conversation, I think we have had as well as the guidance clerk conversation we have had. The bookkeeper question, I am looking for my notes on that. We have it right now, set at 1,300 plus students would receive an ex, would receive a bookkeeper. I wonder if we bring that down to 1,200 since we're going with that number for the AP. I know that if given the opportunity, dependent on a couple of factors there, that if that position could be traded also, if we substituted it for something else. But I know as you become a middle school that's larger than some of our high schools, becomes a significant burden on a secretary to manage all the bookkeeping.
Chair?
Yes?
Yes, and while that's true, I know that some of our smaller high schools, they have a lot of money flowing through their internal accounts just by the nature of being a high school. So I don't know, this is definitely not an area at all of expertise for me, what a bookkeeper at middle school handles compared to a bookkeeper at high school. So I would need more information to really be able to weigh in with any more expertise than what I just shared.
So the conversation I had with both of these principals who would be impacted, I think we honestly could change the number to 1,500, because I do think, again, whenever you have a middle school that's larger than, you know, almost half of our high schools, then they are dealing with a lot of internal accounts. But to that point also, with RevTrack being introduced, that does offer electronic record keeping more so than we've ever had before, so there's not as many checks coming in and cash coming in and that kind of thing. So, but with sports fees and club fees and, I mean, there's still a lot going on there. I just, and at 1,500, I guess my question is, at 1,500 plus students, can a confidential secretary do all of the work of a confidential secretary in addition to the bookkeeping responsibilities for a school of 1,500 students?
No.
Okay, so then the question is, can a school of 1,200 students do that? And so that's where I am, is the ratio 1,300 or is it 1,500 or is it 1,200? What does that look like? I think the answer at 1,500 absolutely is no, but I'm curious to know, in speaking with the other principal impacted, they didn't, you know, don't want to call a principal out specifically, but it didn't seem as significant of a need at less than 1,500 students. How does it please the Board?
I think it needs to be 1,200.
Chair, Reverend Cummings, thoughts?
Yeah, I can go for a reduction. I'm just kind of a little uncomfortable with all this because we asked all of them to bring these numbers and we're just picking them apart. But I do see the need in some of this, but we got to get this done, so.
And we're really close. So bookkeeper, where do we want to be? The sooner we make this decision, that much closer we'll be.
Dr. Gullett, is there something that we might be missing that would help this?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I don't see the difference between the 1,200 and 1,300. I think I heard consistency with the other number. Oops, right, but I don't think the impact changes allocations, correct, the school, as I'm looking at the data.
Based on the 100-day membership numbers, but we know that may change based on allocations. But right now, whether we do 1,200 or 1,300, we're looking at two schools.
Okay, so really, it's just the preference of the Board and if you wanted, I think, similar number to another allocation.
My question was if we went not to 1,200 or 1,300, but we actually went it to 1,500, that was my question.
Liberty would no longer be included.
Right, and my understand, well, again, not trying to call a principal out, I don't know that it's a need there.
So to the question, this is something that I have personally heard directly from principals about. I've actually talked to people out in the field about this and this has come up as a pattern, even in my roundtables and in face-to-face. I'm thinking about... I'm thinking about our audits. And being very mindful of that being a key aspect of what we need to do and be responsible with those audits. And I think it's important to make sure that we are responsible to have folks in there that can get that work done appropriately. Um, we have a responsibility to our citizens to do that, so I support keeping the bookkeepers. Whether it's twelve hundred or thirteen hundred, I'm okay with, I would not recommend them going higher.
Okay.
So can we agree to, to thirteen hundred?
Twelve, did you say twelve hundred?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
My only reservation was the same for the assistant principals, that if we rezone Liberty and she falls below thirteen hundred. Then she would be disqualified from the, the whole purpose of the AP and the bookkeeper that we're adding. And I, we don't know what those rezoning numbers will look like yet and we're yet to have that final conversation, but that would be something I would think about in future planning. If we made it twelve hundred, then we would ensure more than likely that we would encompass Liberty regardless of the rezoning numbers.
Okay, I'm comfortable with twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred it is on bookkeeper. All right, and ESAL para professionals, based on the new ratios, show us losing ESAL paras at the middle school level. That would be losing an ESAL para at Horizon, losing one at Liberty and losing one at Osceola. Based on anticipated population bands. I. I, I, I struggle with, with that one.
I do too.
Um.
There's the ten day count, you know, um, we, there's going to be time if, if those are positions that haven't been filled and, and the. And the numbers don't make anyway, then that decision can be taken care of at that time, but I certainly don't want to signal to any. School especially, I, I just don't want to signal to any school that we're preparing not to provide support.
I, I'm not comfortable with removing ESAL paras. I think you all heard me say that. We got them all added to high school, so. But. Dr. James, Reverend Cummings, how do you feel about ESAL paras at middle school level?
There's still, there's still a need, the need doesn't change because they move from middle school to high school or elementary to middle, so. There's still a need there, we need them.
So if we add back in the ratio of the one to seventeen for ESAL paras. That will get us back to. I think the full staffing on that. Okay? Ms. Morant?
That's using the population band that she presented in elementary school?
Um, it goes back to the original population band.
It was a different one for high school, right?
Um, yes.
What I'm hearing, we will use the population band for high school and go back to the one to seventeen ratio for elementary and middle is what I think I, I'm hearing, okay.
Yes. So that has us not losing any ESAL paras at any level.
And it would have been a ninety-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollar reduction if I'm reading this correctly, right?
At the middle.
Yes.
Yes, and, and for the potential impact. That they. Can provide in, in that position to our kids and their success, I, I just think that that's continues to be money well spent. If we can find them.
Before moving to elementary, may I just go over at middle school to make, ensure I've captured everything?
Please.
Okay, so for middle school, the APs, much like we, we did with high school, will go back to the original with one APC, one APD. However, for enrollment of twelve hundred or more, they will get an additional one. And then a fourth one or another additional with enrollment of seventeen hundred or more. The bookkeeper, we will keep that, but we will change that enrollment number to twelve hundred. Um, with the counselors, we already addressed that and changing that they can sub for allocations greater than two, I went out of order, sorry about that. The guidance clerks, we will revert back to that original um, staffing ratio. And for ESAL paras, we will keep them at one to seventeen, not using the band. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, elementary is all we have left.
Elementary, mind your chair.
So we already had conversation about school counselor. Uh, in that conversation, we discussed that they would be able to substitute for instructional support for allocations greater than one. We already discussed ESAL paras because we're going back to the one to seventeen ratio. The only other, well, okay, I, I am in full support of adding a third PE teacher when our uh, school enrollment is over a thousand. So I'm in full support of that. Right now, we only have one school that would be impacted by that, but um, we're hovering close to those numbers at some other schools. Uh, the guidance clerk, I think we had conversation about guidance clerk as well. That once you reach a certain. Think the ratios for elementary school on guidance clerk. Look decent to me, I think there's only an impact of one additional. Guidance clerk there and then the, let's see, permanent substitute, so where was permanent substitute on this stuff in plan?
Be on the second page of version two, well, number page four, but second page for elementary.
And the original.
Originally, they only received one per school, but the version three proposal is an additional one if they um, for every ten plus self-contained units. I'm sorry, if they have ten or more self-contained units, they would receive a second permanent sub.
That seems like a, a significant need to me.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? So we're going to keep that in and the last conversation is about kindergarten paras. My only conversation, and I know that we have some very strong opinions on kindergarten paras, but whenever I look to adding. Three, four or six people on campuses, I question if it's possible that we split the difference. Um, while it wouldn't be a one to one ratio, it, it could still be adding people to campuses without necessarily adding. The significant number that we're looking at at a one to one ratio and, and that's honestly where I'm going to land um, on that. And we can continue to have conversation.
Chair.
Yes.
I hear what you're saying and, and I would say that until we have para professionals that are no longer. Teaching regularly in our classrooms, that I think we need more of them, not less of them, maybe there can be some best practice around the use of. Para professionals that early in the season, having them directed to kindergarten. To really get the kids on, on a good track. Is valid and then giving principals the, also that flexibility because we know it's happening anyway. For them to utilize them as, as needed uh, across other areas, I love the idea of where it's possible, depending on the school and how the kids are doing on their kindergarten skills. Being able to transition some of those paras into those higher grades to help prepare them for, for testing and, and MTSS and all of that. Uh, I just, they are the back, they have been the backbone and the soldiers to get us through and it's still happening. Uh, we also, on a very exciting note, have quite a few that have thrown their heads in the ring to become teachers, we're, we're growing our own. And this gives them that opportunity as well to really get a chance to see what it's like and. In more than just one type of, of classroom. So uh, my, my short story on what I just said is that kindergarten really does matter, we all know that, we need to put our money where our miles are and where the data shows it needs to be driven. And then when there are, and providing that flexibility for principals where the kids are coming up and doing well, to be able to have them help in other areas, that's where I am with that. But I would not support cutting.
I agree with Ms. Thor, I think it needs to be one to one and if there's a way we can create flexibility around. Them being used in other places when necessary and deemed by the principal, I think that would be great, but uh. Only takes one day in a kindergarten class to. Understand the need of a kindergarten para.
All right, so I love you guys, consensus, can we move on?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, let me repeat elementary, if you don't mind, so we will maintain the ratios that are presented on version three. For the APs, um, we've already addressed school counselors, we'll keep them as presented on version three, um, same with the PE teacher. And the only thing it looks like we are changing will be the um, ELL population band, we will ke- uh, remove that and put it back to one to seventeen. We will do the one to one paras and then also the permanent sub.
That is correct.
Have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and this is not related to paras, it is, well, maybe it is, it's about music at elementary, I, I'm seeing some red. That I scrolled by and, and it caught my attention again. Where are we with music and? In elementary and. Yes, because I see music, I see art in black and then red, music crossed out and then music back at one per school, what are we doing?
So that was just to clean it up because we had questions around the ratios, the way it was written, it was written as one slash um, art slash music. And it was being interpreted that they had to choose one or the other, when actually they receive one art and one music, so we just wanted to clean that up so it's clear. So you, you um, re- itify um, why we needed to do that.
Okay, and then sometimes you need to hear something more than once.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I think that gets us clear here and um, Ms. Boston Ellis will have to. Sharpen her pencil and let us know what the number actually looks like that we've approving this evening um, on that sheet right there that's on our screen. Uh, it's not going to be five point three, but it's going to be close. Um, so that will be up to us then to go to these, whenever we're talking district staffing and where, where putting these people and I know that's. Ms. Boston Ellis' lane, so we'll have to have real conversations about where dollars are going to come from for this.
So with this, with these changes, modifications, are we ready to move forward with this staffing plan for tonight?
That's what I hear, we, we will make the updates, I'm going back to the office and working on those now, so they will be ready for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may add to, to next steps, in addition to putting this on the board agenda, um, being mindful of our um, budget process. Um, we have a lot of unknowns happening in Tallahassee right now. And so we would want to make sure that we're mindful of impact as we look at those dollars, not just separately, but in totality with those other impactful numbers, so. Uh, the request would be of the board that we wait until the budget is finalized before we do anything to enact this moving forward. Which is going to be underway in March and April, we won't have a final budget until, until probably April, Ms. Boston Ellis, correct, yes?
Session is really late this year, isn't it?
So is the request that we. Approve this at this point, but not actually implement it at all, i- is that what the request is? Because then I, I will ask the, I mean, I'm, so then I, I, then I would question why we're having the conversation now, honestly. I mean, I understand why we're having, but I mean, if we're doing it so that schools can plan, but yet we're telling them they can't actually plan because of, but.
I thought that was the whole purpose of us having special meetings.
Right.
I, I understand what you're saying, but sit in my shoes for just a moment and reflect on this. As Dr. Gullett stated, there are so many things going on in Tallahassee. Especially as it impacts the Family Empowerment Scholarship and that expanding. And that has expanded exponentially in our district over the last two years. My request is we hold off on hiring anybody until April. If that is not the desire of the board, then I s- I still think we need to prioritize things so. We don't go out and hire five million dollars worth of staff. I would request that we prioritize who goes first, second and third. So I understand planning, I understand, we're going to hire teachers, period, but, and I understand there's some positions that need to be filled. But there are some positions that you are requesting that are supplemental in nature, they're to help the schools do better. And I, I would just hate for us to put ourselves in a position where we're for, forced to make cuts. Um, at the ninth hour. And that's what sort of troubles me about all of this, if, 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 if it was a, you know, perfect storm, this is it. And just to, not to paint a dark cloud, but recall your requests in prior meetings. About looking at staffing that is in referendum, what could be moved to the general fund? Looking at the staff that we have in the ESAR funding, what needs to be moved before twenty twenty-four? So I just feel like there's all of these different priorities going on and they're wonderful and they're great and there's things that we need. But what we need is a priority, what is the priority of our district? And then begin to fill positions based on those priorities. I know what Ms. Morant has to do and I know what the schools need to do, we need to find teachers and staff before everyone else does. But I just think we're going to put ourselves in a not so good position until we look at the entire um, funding. I mean, uh, from what I'm hearing, there is additional funding, but I'm also hearing things like family empowerment, I'm also hearing things like the retirement rate is going up. And there is always an expectation of health um, insurance going up, there is an expectation of salary increases. Um, so, and, and there's a lot of things that need to be fixed in our district level staffing plan, which is a whole nother discussion. That we need to address. And I'm probably talking too much, but I just think this is my opportunity to share my concerns with you. And I would feel rem- remiss that I had done you wrong if I didn't speak up at this time.
Ms. Boston Ellis, thank you for. The transparency and the conscientious comments that you've given to us on this. So basically what we're hearing is that we're approving this, but we're not moving forward with it, this is just for planning purposes, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I, I need, I'll need some direction, um. Because the allocations that we send to the schools, it's based on the allocations here unless we move with the previous one and we are um. Held to certain things, so as far as union contract, there are certain dates we have to give folks times for involuntary transfer, there's a transfer period. And that's why we were needing it for um, today to work through that, so if we're changing or if it's, we're not going to do the supplemental. If we are able to move with instructional at least, um, I, I would just need some di- direction because we will need to. Back into like the career fair and things like that, that the schedules is built on based on um, different timeframe and required posting. So I, I just would need that clear. Direction and if we can anticipate dates.
So is the idea, Dr. Gullett, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that I'm understanding since I, based on union contracts and all of that, that we're, we needed to have this done today. I mean, we, we, that's all we heard, that's why we're having a, like, emergency work session this morning to get this done for today.
And that was, I, I, just so I'm clear, that was based on the scheduled um, career fair of April fifteenth and then backing back to those dates.
Right, but the, the concern is that if we post positions. And, and maybe I'm just totally missing this, but we would potentially post positions. Immediately after the board, this is hypothetically, immediately after the board meeting today for an August start date, is that what?
Not immediately, so we, we begin with, and I, I, I can share this, this draft of the timeline as well. But um, first after we get the allocations approved, we then send that initial allocation to the schools. Um, we also know, we've put in this timeline that we know the board meeting for the rezoning is February twenty-eighth, so we may have to send updates. And then from March first through March seventh is the involuntary transfer period for any potential displaced um, folks and that will potentially come from the rezoning. Then in March eighth through March tenth, the schools are able to submit their instructional position requests and trin- and skyward for that um, involuntary transfer period. Then March fourteenth through seventeenth, we have spring break, then March twentieth and twenty-first, so two days, our, our team will process um, that information. Then April thir- I'm sorry, then April, March twenty-second through April. Then April 3, I'm sorry, then April, March 22nd through April 4th, the instructional positions are then posted internally for the voluntary transfer period. We have to do that timeframe, that's required. April 3rd will be the last date to submit a position request in skyward. That's for our schools, if there are positions they want to post, and we'll have those ready for August, also in time for the scheduled career fair. And then April 5th through April 11th, instructional positions are also requested during this window to post externally as well. And then April 15th, we have the job fair. So we would need, if we back some of that up, I just want us to all be on the same page. We'll need to back up the career fair, so we can then work backwards into those required posting dates of the involuntary transfer and the voluntary transfer. Period.
And so what I heard, based on this timeline that Ms. Morant has so eloquently shared with us, the request is that we actually adjust the timeline entirely and not even begin the process until mid-March? I'm just, I'm not asking, I'm sorry, I'm asking Dr. Gullett.
No, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. So Ms. Morant, but based on what you've shared, that process should be able to move forward, just pending finalization of the budget. If the board prioritizes these items, that's fine, just know that we don't have the balanced budget yet, and there are going to be a lot of other moving pieces that need to be adjusted, which could have great impact. So I don't want to have that decision in isolation, because there's a request from the CFO saying we have a lot of unknowns coming from Tallahassee in funding, but what you've shared can move forward, and I would hope, and we don't know this, that at that time, when those positions are actually allocated to the school, that we may have the additional information, but there's no guarantee.
So there's a possibility that after we go through budget and allocations, that this still could change again?
I wouldn't, it's a great question. I wouldn't say that it would change, I just want to, I just want to ask the board to consider, is this the final decision regardless of what the budget is from Tallahassee? That's really what I'm asking. We just need some clarity on that, right? I just, and I can almost feel Ms. Boston Ellis up here. There are a lot of unknowns. So if it's the board's desire for this to be the final decision, that's fine, we just need to know that, but there are going to be a lot of other moving pieces perhaps.
Thanks. And I appreciate all of the moving parts. At the same time, we have people that need to make decisions, kids that are going to be showing up. At the very least, I felt like this process, from my perspective, was to really hear and honor what's happening in our schools and try to provide accordingly. If there's any extraneous positions in what we just talked about, I certainly don't see them. I know that there are other budgets and other employees involved, but from my view, you know, we're talking about getting the right people in the right positions to support our schools so that we can be more successful in our recruitment of teachers. You know, I think about our homeschool liaisons and, you know, other excellent support folks that are budgeted from other places, where that money is going to dry up. I hope that we're focusing on trying to encourage as many of them as we can to become certified or out of field, and, because they've proven themselves to be warriors, and let's get them teaching too. So that's where I am with this. I hear it, and, but we also have to provide a direction and stability so that our people know what to expect, and in uncertain times, that's difficult. So I appreciate you putting it out there, but at the same time, I'm ready to put on my, I don't know.
No, and, Vice Chair, to your point, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I'm good, honestly, and I know that this is a lot, it's a lot, but we have money because of kids, and we've heard from our principals and from our staff that they need more support where kids are. Does that mean that when we get to district staffing, that we're going to have to sharpen our pencil immensely? Possibly. But where I am is we've done a lot of work over three meetings specifically about school support, and that's where our kids are. Does not mean that people who are sitting behind desks that don't ever see a child on a daily basis isn't also providing valuable support, or even, you know, a mechanic, or not meaning that those folks aren't providing valuable support to ensure that our kids also are receiving the ability to succeed. But we have done a lot of work to ensure that we're putting resources towards our students. That's where I am on it.
Madam, go ahead. I agree. I think this is a priority. Our schools are a priority, and that means we're going to have to find $5 million from some other bucket, and I appreciate that and understand that, and so, you know, I'm prepared to continue to have the uncomfortable conversations, but if our schools need more support, that is where our students are, and that's where it needs to, it needs to be. So it is a priority for me as a board member.
So I'm in the same, let's move forward. We don't need to hold, we don't need to keep backing you guys up.
Right.
You'll be able to do what you need to do.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Right now, we also understand that this is $5 million based on what our budgeted numbers are right now, and we don't know what that BSA is going to look like, and we don't know what, we don't. It does appear that we'll have additional mental health dollars coming, specific in the FEFP allocations. I mean, it does appear that some of those things are going to be coming through, that there'll be specific allocations to impact some of these areas that we have increased, but for the sake of something else that they may be taking away from. So I understand completely that the conversation continues, and that right now, this is, you know, five-plus million that we're adding based on what we believe the number potentially could be, but we're kind of not, we're at a loss to know exactly what the legislature is going to do, and we're not going to know that in enough time for us to change all the work that we've done today.
Basically, excuse me, I'm sorry. So basically, we're saying, please proceed, but there could be some other considerations in the future.
If there are, bring it to us.
If there are, then we'd have to deal with them at that time. But right now, we need to get you guys, I guess, on the right track to stabilize the district. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. Thank you. Please understand, it's just a matter of being able to make sure the board is aware of all those factors, and we have a responsibility to do that.
Right.
And that number is not fixed. I anticipate there will be some change, we don't know what the change is, but that we don't go into that conversation without the board being aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
And I sure do appreciate that, as I said at the start. And I also know that it is our opportunity, and I believe it's February 21st, we'll be going up and meeting with our legislators and advocating and sharing that $5.3 million number that we have worked hard to direct directly to our schools for student success. We're not satisfied being where we are, and we appreciate their support, we appreciate the tax cuts, but we also appreciate all the money that's going to go towards public education and the economy that we're currently living in, in Florida.
Thank you. So with that, board, we'll go with comments and concerns. Attorney Powers, do you have anything for us?
Nothing from legal, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
No comment.
Dr. James?
No comment.
Dr. Gullett?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Reverend Cummings?
Okay.
Vice Chair Thor.
Just thanks again to everybody for hanging in and doing everything that we can to support our kids and our schools.
Thank you, and I'll wrap this up by saying, yes, second that. Thank you to all the hard work and those of you that have been with us today. Happy Valentine's Day. And with that, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we will see you back in a few hours. It is right now 12:36 PM. Thank you.[1747.88][1747.88][music]